Good evening. I'd like to open the 15th meeting of fiscal year 2020 of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Cheryl Taggias, the chair.
Denise Swenson, secretary.
Julia Duncan, clerk.
Liam Clark, planning director.
Alison Quinn, assistant planner.
April Anderson, member.
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
And Rich Beeler has notified us that he will not be able to join us this evening due to a family illness. Okay. Administrative items, our next meetings are February 27th and March 12th. And then, next on the agenda would be approval of minutes. We have January 9th and January 23rd, wait, 23rd?
Third.
And has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve the minutes as amended for January 23rd, 2020, and January 9th, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Under administrative, our town planner, Bill Clark, will give us a report or a short summary of some big happenings this week. And we thought it would be useful for the public to hear what those happenings are. So, Bill, go ahead.
Good. We have had three 40B site eligibility applications delivered to the town. 132 units at 648 Canton Ave., 120 apartments at 582 Blue Hill Avenue. 648 is about four and a quarter acre parcel. The 582 Blue Hill Ave. is just under four acres. And this afternoon, we got a site eligibility letter application from 4-24 Franklin Street, which is in East Milton, for 111 units. So...
Falconi.
That is a whole lot of apartments. And that's, they all are apartments. That on top of the 40B that we already have in litigation on Randolph Ave., the Ice House that we have that is doing a quick redesign, that's a lot of development. It's a lot of 40Bs. It's a lot of work for the zoning board of appeals. And that's who will be doing the majority of that application work.
Bill, there's site walks for the Canton Ave. and the Blue Hill Ave. have already been scheduled, so can you let folks know what those are?
I haven't been told when to make those public.
Okay.
Which ones are open to the public? I haven't been given that date yet.
So, the Blue Hill Ave., I mean, the Parkway, rather, was open to the public. Was that a determination made by the select board or was that a determination made by Mass Housing?
I think it was one that was made of the developer.
Of the developer.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are those all different applicants?
Canton Ave. and Blue Hill Ave. are by the same applicant. Franklin Street is by Joseph Corcoran Company.
Okay. Who's the Canton Ave. and do you know who the applicant is?
Yeah, I've got it right here. The, it's two LLCs, Canton Ave. and Special LLCs.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, 582 Blue Hill Ave. LLC, the applicant. They're...
They're both, same principals, same designers, same law firm.
Same team, everything.
Rednontin Stereo up in Lindo.
And they presented those to you, Bill, at the same meeting?
They came in on Monday. They, I got a call last week that, from the engineer for that, for those two projects, saying that he wanted to meet and go over some particulars on two projects that he had. When he got here, there was a full team of architects, lawyers, engineers, traffic people, the developer, the whole development team. And they said that they would be ready to file with the state within 60 days. Six days later, we got the application, and it had already been to Mass Housing. So, it just came in really quick. So...
So, the planning board should take up both of these as we did for the Ice House in terms of providing comment letters?
Yes.
I guess I'm wondering how it would be beneficial, these are single-family lots, those two. Is the developer going to make the property available for a walk by town officials?
We can ask that question.
Well, I would think the board would like to have a chance to walk.
I would, and I would like the public to be invited as well.
I will ask the applicant if they'll make that possible.
Okay.
Is it just two? In fact, I would request that it all be transparent, all of it. All of the meetings be transparent. With Milton Muse, there was a six-month period where the developer was meeting with officials individually. And I think that that is not an ideal practice because I think it adds confusion down the road.
You mean, one-on-one?
Yeah.
One-on-one meeting?
Well, that was a while ago. I'm not so sure that people do that so much anymore.
Right. I just want to put the word out. I would request that we not. I would request as a board, and other boards would not do that.
One-on-one meetings with the developers?
Yeah, 40B developers. I think it's best to have everything in public and transparent, and so that there's no misunderstanding.
We didn't in the last two that we had, because I was counsel for the zoning board on those, the Hendrys and Randolph. And there wasn't.
There wasn't individual meetings? That's good.
All right. So, just so folks who may be watching understand, these applications are for site eligibility, and that's the first step. So, the comments that might relate to that have to do with, are these appropriate locations? And there's some information, I think, available, Bill, right, about in the guidelines?
All three of these will be on the town's website tomorrow.
Right.
I think the first two are there today. I sent the other to IT. The other, the third one should be up tomorrow.
And the process is that the select board has 30 days in which to reply or respond to Mass Housing unless they request an extension?
30 days from the date in the letter stated by Mass Housing. Mass Housing sent a letter today for 648 Canton Ave. and 582 Blue Hill Ave. saying that comments are due March 15th. So, their clock has already started.
So, I'd like to suggest that we put this on the agenda for our next meeting. And I think we have an idea from our experience with the Ice House property about what kinds of things we could focus on. I will say that both parcels, the Canton Ave. and the Blue Hill Ave., have historic homes on them and have wooded areas.
I do know that...
But not conservationist.
Just wooded.
Just wooded.
Wooded and historic.
The usual process for town departments is to have a meeting, and it's usually after I've gone through the three applications, I make all of those applications available to the department heads. They have a chance to go through it. We'll have a meeting, go through what the issues might be, are, do we have questions, and what questions or issues we want to take and put onto the town's letter. We'll synthesize our comments, submit them to either me or to, I eventually give them to town council. The letter gets created. That's up to the select board. They haven't started that process or directed that process yet.
Again, so, folks who would like to provide comments can do that to Bill or directly to the select board, and also directly to Mass Housing. So, the Mass Housing contact person would be in the letter that will be on the website, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Then, the next step is if the Mass Housing approves the application for eligibility, then those applicants themselves would need to submit their applications to the zoning board of appeal?
Yes.
And that would start the review process. The board of appeal manages all of that, but they take input from town departments and residents and any other interested party. So, I would assume that there's going to be some publicity about if that, if and when that happens. But that's kind of just outlining the process. All right. Any questions for Bill on that?
I have a question for Bill, or maybe for Kathleen. Does DHCD consider, or Mass Housing consider, an influx of multiple projects during their review? Or do they consider them as just one-off?
They consider them really one-off, you know, every time. I have looked to see whether there was some situation where you could say, we have too many?
Yeah.
For the capacity for the, I mean, maybe Julie Kramer knows about some that, I haven't seen anything that says...
No, but if you, you know, if you get a 40B permit in place...
Right.
Then you have a year.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, they're safe harbors if we have approved units.
Right.
And Bill and I talked about this the other day. So, if we had the housing production plan, and we had progress on the housing production plan, that's one safe harbor. But that requires the units to have been approved.
Right.
And the only one that we've approved, well, we approved Hendrys, but they didn't exercise it.
Yeah.
And then Randolph Ave. is under appeal to the land court, so...
We don't have something to fall back on for, safe harbor.
Yeah.
One good point is, I did send the housing production plan to DHCD, and got the reply back that they have it, and they've started their review.
Well, the application by one of these people already mentions our draft housing plan.
Right.
They've already incorporated that into their discussion.
Right. I mean, it became a case of, we had a housing production plan, and we had already started the process to renew that same housing production plan. So, in DHCD's eyes, that was all good and taken into account anyway, so...
Right.
So, we are just about at 7:15 for the public hearings. But first, is there anyone here who wanted to address the board on a matter that's not on our agenda tonight? No. All right. Seeing none. We will move on to the public hearing. The 7:15, the public hearing is on our May Town Meeting zoning articles. We have the Milton Village Mixed Use PUD, the Milton Village District Improvement Revolving Fund, the Milton Village Historic Preservation Revolving Fund, and the Great Estates Affordable Housing Provision. I will say that on the, on the first three related to Milton Village, the select board did reopen the warrant, and they did accept those two articles, the funds, and revisions to the Mixed Use PUD. They submitted those to the warrant committee, and the warrant committee chair invited me to their meeting on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
So, I went and gave an overview and answered questions from the warrant committee. I did note that we were having a public hearing tonight, and possibly beyond tonight if warranted. And they asked that if we do seek to make changes, to let them know as soon as possible. I think the deadline for going to print for the warrant is still in March. Is that right, Bill?
They told me it was going out.
Are they pushing it out a little further now?
No, they're pushing it out faster. They said they were sending it to, I know the majority of it is already sent.
Okay.
Well, that's not, that's the annual report, not the warrant.
It was in March, the last I heard.
Yes.
So, I mean, we're at February 13th now, so...
To the mercy of the warrant committee. Make it as quick as you can so that they have to write up their comments.
Well, right. And they, they would need time to review the changes, too. Right. So, that's the background update on that. Okay. Is there, maybe what we'll do is take the Great Estates Affordable Housing Provision article first, so take that out of order because it's a less lengthy one. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the board related, in regards to that particular zoning article? Or would you like for us to give an overview first? Looks like an overview first. Okay. So, this article, do we have it up on the screen? Let me get my articles here. This article came about as another project that is under construction was seeking to get their affordable units approved by the Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD, as required by, in their special permit. And in doing so, had a number of discussions with DHCD about the off-site units and what DHCD would accept to have them count towards the subsidized housing inventory. And so, the developer of the Willcott Woods, under which we granted a special permit under the Great Estates bylaw, was following that discussion and decided that they would reach out to DHCD sooner rather than later to address the same kinds of issues that they may require in getting their off-site units approved by DHCD. And so, that's what this amendment is in response to. And DHCD, in accepting units in an off-site two-family, had, would do so if the units are owned and occupied by one, at least one homeowner, who could lease the second unit to a tenant. So, that is the change here that would be allowed. And then, the other change is related to the minimum square footage. And it's been found that some of two families, both units are not of 1,250 square feet. And not only that, that exceeds DHCD's requirements. So, we're changing that requirement, that minimum square footage requirement to say that the square footage must conform to the requirements of DHCD. So, that's the overview. Now, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? Have any questions? Seeing none.
So, we would be making a motion to close the public hearing on that particular amendment to the bylaw?
Well, I'll make a note, or to all of us. We received an email late last night from Alexander Whiteside that has comments about this article, as well as the other articles. And I personally didn't have time to review those during the day today. And so, we may...
I did.
Okay. And so, we could close the hearing, having accepted those, you know, today into the record and for our consideration. But we could close the public hearing on that, and then have discussion about it at our next meeting.
Could we just make sure that nobody else came in the room just now for this topic?
Okay.
You can stay.
All right. So, we're talking, we are working on our public hearing of the zoning articles for the annual town meeting, which will be in May. And we were just speaking about the Great Estates Affordable Housing revision to the Great Estates section of the zoning bylaw. Is there anyone here who would like to have us go over that again? Or would like to address the board on that matter? Going once, twice? All right.
I'm happy to move on.
All right.
So, I would make a motion to close the public hearing on the amendment to Section 10 of the general bylaw, Section 3Q, subsection 9D.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we will go to Milton Village. I, I prepared this as something to, to help the, I may have a few extras for maybe Julia. This is a sort of one-pager with a map on the back. And this was to help give an overview of the Milton Village Mixed Use PUD overlay zoning. And for those who might be watching and not familiar with this, is that this relates to the Milton Village Business District. The zoning in the Business District does not allow for mixed-use residential with commercial uses. It only allows for business uses or single-family homes. And the district itself is, has a lot of history. It's been, in its history, a mixed-use district because people used to live sometimes in the same building where they worked, or they had their own business. But in 1938, when our zoning was enacted, it overlaid zoning into areas, and that overlaid zoning didn't necessarily match the uses that were there. And so, we have some businesses that have done okay there over time. But we've also had some mixed-use built under a different zoning, and that would be the 88 Wharf property. So, what we're looking to do is to provide an alternative that overlays that business district that would allow for mixed-use development. So, that's the overall, that's the overall goal. That's what, the zoning is a tool that really allows for economic development, allows for property owners to reinvest in their property. It gives them a use which would allow them to borrow money and make that investment in their property. So, and why that's important is, in order to be able to maintain the historic character of the district, people need to be able to generate income from their properties. And it would help to revitalize some aspects of it. Some people have said it would be nice to be able to get a sandwich or to get a cup of coffee in that district, and to have it be more, bring some more vitality, places for people to get together and to socialize. And importantly, it would provide for a different kind of housing. Milton is 90-some percent single-family, and there is, and we've heard, an interest in having a place for new households, or young professionals, or people, young people who've grown up in Milton, to be able to live in Milton, and also for people who've had homes and who are perhaps empty nesters who want to downsize, to have a place. And the, a place to move to where there are amenities nearby, where they're not isolated, where they can take public transit, where they can access the recreational areas, which is the bike path and the land, which are beautiful natural parts of Milton. So, some of the shortcomings of the Business District, as I mentioned, it doesn't allow a mix of uses. But there's also no provision for affordable housing. And there are minimal dimensional standards. So, the dimensional standards are what, where you can put a building on the property, so how far it's set back from its property lines. Also, how, how much of the property you can cover, and how tall it can be. So, there's, there are some standards, but not very many. Importantly, there are no design standards, which means that there's no provision for not allowing a building that may be of a design that's not in character with the historic district. There would be no provision to deny that kind of design. There's also no provisions for historic preservation, so no restrictions on tearing down historic properties. And also importantly, the parking, there's a large parking requirement. None of the buildings, none of the properties in the district meet the parking requirement that's in our zoning, because it would require tearing down most of the buildings and building parking lots. So, we would, we would lose what we're hoping to preserve there. So, the overlay requires some commercial on the first floor, half of the first floor, and it would require residential uses. And again, this is just an option. Doesn't require anyone to change anything about the way they use their buildings today. Doesn't require any tenants to question whether their landlords are somehow requiring them to do anything differently. This is just a tool if somebody wanted to reinvest in their property. And it gives them an opportunity to do a mixed-use rather than a purely business use. So, the other thing about those residential uses is that there's a baseline requirement of 12% of the units to be affordable, and to count towards the town's subsidized housing inventory. Relates back to what we were talking about before with the 40B applications in terms of how many affordable units Milton has. And we are at about 5% of our total housing stock being affordable and counting towards that SHI. And as long as we don't have 10%, then applicants can apply to DHCD for these comprehensive permits under the Chapter 40B law. So, the other thing, other key provisions in the overlay are, they are more stringent dimensional standards that are controlling the location, the size, and the height of new buildings. And there are detailed design standards that are required of an application, so that the planning board would be the review body, in the case of this overlay district, in granting special permits. And the planning board would have to be satisfied that the design standards have been met before they would grant a special permit. It also requires historic review. We've included in the zoning requests that the Historical Commission review applications, and it also encourages preservation. There is a bonus provision for properties on Adams Street. So, properties on High Street would be limited to three stories and 37 feet. Currently, the Business Zone actually allows for those to go up to 45 feet. But in our work on this, there was a lot of concern about scale on High Street being different than scale on Adams Street. And so, bonuses are allowed only on properties that front onto Adams Street. And that would allow for four-story buildings and 48 feet in height, under three different bonus categories. And one would be additional affordability beyond the 12%. And that would be for an additional 5% to 8% above the 12. The other would be for contributions to improvements at Milton Landing. And then, the third would be for historic preservation, either onsite or a contribution into a fund. So, that's sort of the technical components of it. Some of the key points about this is that there was a two-year effort through the Master Plan Implementation Committee, some 40-plus public meetings. The town engaged with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to do the initial study, initial work with us. And then additionally, for MAPC to do a build-out analysis of the zoning. The town also engaged with a traffic consultant and parking consultant called Beta, and they did two different studies, one based on the existing conditions, and one based on the build-out analysis. And all of those studies have been considered in various revisions to this zoning, and have been incorporated into what we have before us today. Some, some key points, again, is this, it's an alternative to the existing zoning, so it's not mandatory. And many parcels are unlikely to change, because the zoning looks at trying to encourage investment, but not, but not so much that one would be encouraged to tear down a historic property. So, enough to warrant investment, but not too much, so that we wouldn't lose the historic character of the district that we have. So, some of them could change through renovation. So, a building that's fully commercial now, but may be vacant on some floor, upper floors, could be converted to commercial on the first floor, or kept commercial on the first floor, but converted to residential up above. And then, some sites could change through redevelopment. One that we've talked about a lot is where the citizens' kiosk is with the parking around it, and how that, which I think generates maybe $17,000 a year in tax revenue, could really be something more attractive, something that provides more vitality, or someplace to go, and could also provide more tax revenue to the town. to go and could also provide more tax revenue to the town. And the total square footage that, in the build-out analysis, that was thought that could be had with this development, so new, could be 150,000 square feet. So just for point of reference, 88 Wharf is 164,000 and change square feet. So the rest of the district that would be allowed additional square footage, it's actually less square footage than what could be built out under the commercial, underlying commercial zoning. And it could, instead of having it be all commercial, what we could get if, through this zoning, is an additional 120 to 150 approximately units. And when we say units, it would be either condominiums or apartments, and that's on an average of 925 square feet per unit. So some would be less and some would be more. But one could say that an average two-bedroom unit could be 950 to 1100, 1200 square feet. 1200 might be on the large side.
Figure than anything that's proposed in these 40Bs that we just got. I can tell you right now.
Right. So the idea is that the housing here would be one- and two-bedroom units, that there's demand, a high demand for one-bedroom units in this area. We've heard that from property owners who have rental properties both on Elliott Street and on Adams Street. So if we were to get that approximately 150,000 square feet or 120 to 150 residential units, it may yield us about a half a million dollars additional property tax income per year in 2019 tax rate. And at times when the town's looking for where we're going to get recurring revenue, there's an opportunity for us to gain some here in this district. So in the, in the impact analyses, the traffic engineers made a recommendation, something that was recommended several times over the decades I've heard, is that there should be a traffic light at the intersection of Adams, Brook and Randolph because it would, cars come over the hill, go down towards Boston and going pretty fast, and there's nothing to really slow them down. And it makes exiting Wharf Street challenging, and it makes it challenging for pedestrians as well. But the traffic consultant, again, recommended that, and I understand, Bill, that the town is actually working towards that recommendation, right?
We are.
Another recommendation that was made, so that's irrespective of the zoning, that improvement's going to hopefully make its way in the district soon. The other thing the traffic consultant recommended was signalization changes at the intersection of Elliott and Adams. So it make, right now, there's a lot of some, the way the pedestrian signal works, all traffic has to stop, and he had some suggestions to make that work better. And then he also suggested that Milton really needs to work with Boston because the intersection across into Lower Mills there is a problem that backs up into Milton. And the town has reached out to Boston to work on that as well. In the analysis also in terms of the parking, he looked at all the public parking. So there's curbside parking on both Adams and High Streets and Wharf Street, excuse me, but there's also public parking in a municipal lot off of Wharf Street. And what he found was, at least in today's current conditions, that there's 66% occupancy. So in his mind, there's room for additional commercial uses there that would take advantage of that public parking. So one of the key things that I mentioned was reducing the parking. The parking has actually been a pretty large factor in the sort of property owners having their hands tied with what they can do there. And parking also, the more parking attracts more cars. This is something particularly in a location like this where you can walk to things. You can walk to the trolley, you can take the bike path, you can walk to a grocery store, to pharmacy, to coffee shops, sandwich shops, restaurants. Most of it's across the river in Lower Mills. There are some on the Milton side, and there would be opportunity to have some more on the Milton side. And so if we, if we build more parking, then we're going to attract more cars. That's sort of where the industry is on this, where, and we're at the edge of Boston here, and Boston continues to work more and more in that direction. Now, if we were in a different location, further from public transit, further from amenities, the parking recommendations would be different. So here, we're recommending one parking space per residential unit and one parking space, oh, okay, for every thousand square feet. So I'm being reminded that maybe people who are here aren't necessarily here for this topic, but I wanted to make sure, since this is our public hearing and that people may be watching on it, and it's an opportunity for us to give an overview to everyone. And I've worked my way through my notes, so thank you, Denny.
I didn't mean to rush you. I just didn't know.
Corinne O'Von, can I just make one comment?
Sure.
I just want to give the DPW and the town engineer some applause because they have implemented some of the recommendations from that traffic study already with some pedestrian improvements on Adams Street and a longer queue turning, going down Adams, turning left on Elliott, which I have noticed have made a difference in how the traffic backs up. So kudos to them for being forward-thinking and moving forward with the improvements they could that don't cost a lot of money. So I just want to say that publicly, they don't get a lot of praise.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. And I think also one other thing was moving a couple of parking spaces so people's visibility could be better. So if there are people, parts of town who have questions about parking and traffic, our DPW and our Traffic Commission are listening and are interested in your feedback and comments.
Our traffic engineer, our town engineer actually, because of his review from the Beta project, did go back and he's redesigned the islands to make the islands safer. He's redesigned the islands so that we have the sound and the countdown, the handicap signals are in there.
Oh.
So it's because of the impetus of this traffic report.
Excellent. All right. So we've given maybe a detailed overview.
It was very good. I didn't mean to rush you. I just didn't, I didn't know if there was anyone here from the village. Actually, there might be someone. Is there anyone here from the village?
All right. So is there anyone here who would like to ask questions or provide any comments as this is our public hearing on this zoning article before I go on to the two companion articles related to Milton Village? All right. Thank you, Denny. Seeing none. We have...
There actually are.
Oh, but they didn't want to comment?
Yes.
Or did they?
All right. I will again note that we received in the same email late last night, comments from Alexander Whiteside, same comment as before. We'll take a look at those between now and our next meeting. The two companion articles for the zoning have to do with establishing funds in which to receive contributions that would come through the bonuses that are outlined in this district. Any questions about that? Comments about that? No. All right. So seeing none.
So I would make a motion to close the public hearing on the Milton Village mixed-use PUD, the Milton Village District Improvement Revolving Fund, and the Milton Village Historic Preservation Revolving Fund.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on. I guess we're 10 minutes past our public hearing for site plan approval for 919 Blue Hill Ave., the Little Sprouts preschool. I believe, yes, Mr. Corcoran, come on up.
Is that an I-93 tag?
No, this is an MBTA. Coming right into Milton, and my house is located right above.
So we have some, a packet we received about a week ago maybe, and then we have some new information tonight. Is that right?
I included the landscaping and the power.
Okay. PowerPoints for what they're going to be showing us tonight? Okay.
The new addition is just a colored rendering of the site plan showing the whole landscaping.
Take it away.
Okay. We want to dim the lights, do an introduction first and then...
Do an introduction first. Yes, please.
There's another chair up here if you need them.
Here. Yeah. I can take them. There's one here, too. You can move.
Okay.
I was doing that, you knew. No, no, no. It was good.
Are you trying to go around? Okay.
It would be easier to just move the bodies instead of the chairs.
All right. Don't ask us. Get out of our wheelhouse. Okay. Are we all resituated now?
Oh, my gosh.
All right. Go ahead with the introductions.
Good. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be back and presenting the application for site plan approval for the Little Sprouts childcare facility at the property at 919 Blue Hill Avenue, the former Colter landscaping property. I'm joined by Kim Hazavardian, who is our traffic engineer, Jim Brady, his son Kevin Brady, who is board member for Little Sprouts, the leader of our pack, Joey Fonseca, who is with Boulder Engineering, Site Engineering, and David Silverman from the other well-known initial TSA, STA architectural firm in the city. Just a quick overview, we have filed in conjunction with this for variances from the setback requirements for building and parking with the zoning board of appeals. That hearing is now set for March 12th, which is a Thursday. I think it's the same night that you may be also meeting. My anticipation is that we'll get through a pretty good presentation tonight, may come back with responses to comments and questions on the 27th. But if things go well, obviously, we would be looking for comments to the Board of Appeals coming out of the night of the 27th and perhaps asking you to hold the time on the evening of the 12th following the Board of Appeals hearing. Obviously, if that doesn't work, we'll look at other dates, but that's the game plan.
So I'm sorry, your meeting with the Board of Appeals is on the 12th of...
12th, 7:30.
7:30? Okay.
We were originally being scheduled for the 25th of this month, this month, but one of the members has had a conflict, so they had to reconstitute the board.
Okay.
And we're on for the 12th. So do have a PowerPoint presentation. It's very similar to the presentation we made to this board a couple of months ago. We've modified the site plan. We think in accordance with comments that we heard that evening, we've done our best to address comments that we've heard from neighbors in the butters. The process, we started over a year ago, actually, with a plan for the site that had a 16,000-square-foot Little Sprouts facility proposed. It was always too big, in my opinion. We heard loud and clear that it was too big and would have been difficult to site and to manage from a parking, from a drop-off and pickup perspective, from a public safety fire and police, et cetera. There was a new team that came forward, led by Kevin, and really took a second look at what could, should go in this location. We've looked at two main options. I'll get into those as I did before. One, a facility that would be allowed as-of-right with no dimensional relief required and no use, well, the use is allowed. The use is as a for-profit childcare facility, it is not regulated by local zoning, that is in accordance with state zoning statute, but it is subject to the reasonable regulation with respect to density, height, setback, and those issues. We looked at an as-of-right proposal, which would be 5,000 square feet over 5,000 square feet, essentially a two-story building containing 10,000 square feet, but for efficiency, for safety, for location, access to and from the public ways, less impact associated with conflict with fire and police, et cetera. We came up with a 9,000 and change square foot floor plan. It's one story. It is safer, it is more efficient, it provides safer access and egress from every classroom. Each one has its own direct access, I'll get into that, and we think it works better. It is also, although closer to the lot line for the abutter on Atherton Street, it's actually further away physically than their dwelling by about 10 feet. So let me move forward. Little Sprouts is a growing provider of childcare in eastern Massachusetts and southern New Hampshire. They've got 28 centers in the greater Boston area and are expanding. They've been in business since 1982. As I said, it's actually the largest independent provider of early education and childcare, and they have a unique approach to the way they deliver their services and are responding to what we see as a pretty strong demand for childcare, early childcare in Milton. Family first, they have a passion for what they do, they're innovating. It's not just a daycare, it's an educational program that starts at early age and has had meaningful results in what they do. And their curriculum looks at a number of things, language, cognitive thinking, socio, emotional and physical development, sort of in a program that's holistic in nature. Existing site, 919 Blue Hill Avenue, this is Blue Hill Avenue. This is the former Colter residence, which had a first-floor, small retail shop. This was a greenhouse that's been razed, that's no longer there, and a large garage in the back. There's a large, wide-open curb opening along Blue Hill Avenue and a separate access down below to the rear for the Colter landscaping operation off of Atherton Street. Atherton Street is a dead end, several hundred yards down towards the Curry College Athletic Fields. Bradley Road comes off in this direction. It's an interesting intersection with a light, Atherton Street crossing Bradley Road coming this way, and then Route 138, Blue Hill Avenue coming back up in both directions. This is the town's fire station. As we all know, the town is looking to replace that, presumably back here. From the view from this corner, we look across what's now a grass area. There's the abutter on Atherton Street here. This is the garage. This was what's, the Colter residence. The as-of-right use would tend to fit in this area. The proposed use is going to fit over here. This is a view from the, this is the butters driveway, and this is the Atherton Street entry into the lower level. These are the bays where Colter had his mulches and other materials that he delivered for his landscaping. And it is a, the Colter residence, the building is a two-and-a-half-story building set probably 20 feet, 15 to 20 feet off of this property line. The property line was, which is interesting, I'll get into it, actually here, it's narrower here than much deeper back here. That property sort of swings this way. And looking at it from further down Atherton Street... And looking at it from further down Atherton Street in front of the abutters dwelling, there's a fairly thick stand of mature evergreen and deciduous trees in this corner, and then, as you can see from the other side, a fence, but not much that masks visually what happens in this area. And the location proposed takes advantage both of this vegetation to mask the visibility of this building. So, this is the site plan that we showed you about a month and a half ago. We've modified it to a degree. We've, one of the things we heard was, "Green up the parking lot if you can." Question about whether we could reduce the number of parking spaces, we decided not to because we think managing the drop-off and the pickup is important, and we needed to make sure that we're providing the maximum capacity on-site to do that. And so, this building is slightly modified to this footprint.
Yeah, you had like a corner piece in the edge?
Right.
Right.
And we've added some breaks in the parking area and relocated the proposed dumpster look from here back into here. Building is approximately the same size, it's a little less than 10,000 square feet. Rendered, you can see we've added some green in a row of trees. Albivides along this edge and some additional tree planting inboard of the fence to continue to further provide a visual buffer between the parking area and the abutters residence. This building is actually four feet closer to the dwelling than the prior plan, but it's still 10 feet further away than the building that we could do as-of-right. And if you recall, the as-of-right plan would be 5,000 square feet over 5,000 square feet. When you exceed 5,000 square feet in floor area or lot coverage, you trigger enhanced setbacks under the zoning bylaw. So, front yard setback goes from 20 feet to 35 feet, no, excuse me, to 50 feet. And the rear yard setback, similarly, side yard setback, everything adjusts up. And so, we need, if this were 10,000 square foot, we now need 50 feet front yard setback, 50-foot rear yard setback. We don't need that with respect to this. This building fits inside the envelope for front, and front, rear, and side yard setbacks, as do the parking spaces. Couple of major issues with this. One is the efficiency and the safety characteristics associated with the childcare, particularly now with active shooter issues going on and other things, having everything on one floor is important, and every classroom having its own safety egress. Secondly, and of significant consideration was the concern of Chief Grant in the Fire Department about potential conflict of traffic with the fire station, people, the fire response to an incident, and our own concern that if access and egress is on Atherton Street and then there's an apparent inability to get in and stack on-site, you may have vehicles coming down the street, turning around in driveways and coming back, and we thought to avoid that as well. So, from an operating perspective and otherwise, having direct egress to and from all classrooms in the event of emergency is important. Administrative oversight, we have two sets of eyes from an administrative perspective on one floor rather than one on each floor. More efficient drop-off and pickup for families, don't need to negotiate stairs or an elevator to get up and down from the second floor, and easier to incorporate an outdoor play area into the program for all classrooms having direct access, better direct access to the fenced-in outdoor play area. Floor plan, as it laid out, is sort of turned 90 degrees from the way we show it in plan view, but these are your, you can see each classroom has its own access and egress point outside with the administrative functions in the middle. Proposed plan from a bird's-eye view, this is now looking the other direction with Blue Hill Avenue here, we've set it into this portion of the lot. These large trees are available to buffer the view. It's one story again, not two or two-and-a-half stories. Parking area, parking and access goes in and out of this location. It's as far away from the Atherton Street signal as we can get, it's more than, it's approximately 250 feet from that intersection away. We've added some green space, as you can see. This is the view from the entry in, and the view from that, the corner, the entry being over here from this other corner, looking across the parking lot. The building, as it's rendered, would look something substantially like this. One story with sort of gabled roof, mechanicals, set in a swimming pool in the roof, so invisible and silent. This is the front entry. Again, front entry, and the Blue Hill elevation, the other side will look substantially like that as well, and the rear will look substantially like that. We've got detailed plans for grading and drainage, which, happy to go through the grading and drainage, you know, falls, there's an underground retention system set here. This is a drain system that will capture storm water and bring it to this location. Will handle all the storm water that will come into the site.
Ken, is there any way to zoom in on this?
Yeah, I asked Bill today if we sent the site plan electronically, it might be easier to bring that up because you can zoom in, this is just the PowerPoint.
Okay, so, after you go through this, Bill, I'd like to bring that up after they're done going through their presentations. I do have some questions about this plan, but I'd rather be able to zoom in on it.
Sure. Same with utility plan, it's a fairly simple plan, you've got sewer connection over here, water connection coming here, electric here. Erosion control measures will be installed all the way around the site to contain erosion. This will be a soil management location in the middle of the site, surrounded by hay bales to protect from erosion as the site's being developed. Lighting plan, there are, if I can remember correctly, lights at locations. All of the plan is showing that there is no light spillover anywhere off of the edge of the property, and there's no reason for lights to be on, presumably after 7:30 in the evening during the week because the hours would be 6:00 to 6:30, take a half hour for staff to close up and leave, lights would be off by, you know, 7 o'clock, 7:30 in the evening. And then, very rarely will there be any weekend activity at the location, so it's really a Monday through Friday operation.
So, Bill, I'd like to have that one up on the screen afterwards, too.
And then, from a parking perspective, zoning, and the materials that I provided, I think I had a typo in the zoning table relative to the number of parking spaces required. In the bylaw, I was correct in my filing with the zoning board of appeals, but not in this table. The number of spaces that are required is 18. Zoning requires three spaces for every two instructional rooms, that's one and a half per room, there's 12 rooms, so 18 spaces is the requirement. The as-of-right alternative would provide 26 spaces, significantly more than the 18, but we're going to 33, in part because of concerns we heard in some of our neighborhood meetings about drop-off, as well as meetings, the meeting we had with public safety officials about adequacy of pickup and drop-off, enough stacking area on-site to get traffic safely onto the site off of Blue Hill Avenue, and then adequate stacking as they would be leaving in the afternoon. And so, having an adequate volume of spaces for that period of time is important. And we did an analysis, I think we explained it before, we'll get into it in a little more detail with respective questions. We, two Little Sprouts locations, one in Dedham and one in Norwood, we did a sort of a comparison based on their actual parking volumes. This is a slightly larger facility, it's going to have a maximum of 124 children with 26 employees. How does the pickup and drop-off work as we go through the day? And we provided a table that talks about how many drop-off vehicles would tend to be parked at any one time over the course of each hour. You know, the course of an hour, you'll have, in that peak hour, 53 drop-offs, but over that course of time, we anticipate four dropping off parked at any one time as it flows through that hour. We'll be ramping up from five employees at 6:00 to 12, to 23, full complement, at 8:00, ready to go, and then they ramp back down towards the end of the day as well. So, it's adequate, we think adequate area on-site from the site entry in until you have a chance to park, your handicap parking spaces are here and in, and around and out in that direction, and back to the rendered site plan. So, with that, let me-
Okay, so, yeah, before we do questions from myself and the rest of the board, we have a lot of people here, so why don't we open it up to comments and questions from people in the audience? And since there's a lot, maybe what we'll try and do is keep a running-
We can spread away.
You can spread away, and maybe what we can do is keep a list of the kinds of issues, and then, after we hear from everyone, have you comment or respond to the extent you can tonight on those, and then we'll get to our questions, okay? All right. Thank you. Now, before you go, Ned, you mentioned that you had meetings with neighbors. Were those like publicly kind of, or how wide did you go, and how much notice did you give, and things like that?
So, we had two, one at the site, one at the library, and one at the Fuller Village. In each case, we provided, I wrote to every legal abutter-
So, that's 300 feet?
Three hundred feet, and others who I knew were nearby. We were also in contact with others from the Neighborhood Association who came to the first meeting.
Which would be, which Neighborhood Association, Ned?
Rush Hill Road Neighborhood Association. I know that Roxanne Musto is here.
Okay.
We have an email list of all who came to meetings. I sent email notification and letters to each, and the last meeting we had was at Fuller Village, I think it was at Fuller Village, prior to the meeting that we had with this board.
Okay.
Can I just say to your point that we live three doors up on Atherton Street? This is the first I've heard of this. If it weren't for my neighbors, I wouldn't know a thing, and I'm really enraged at the moment. We've lived on Atherton for 22 years, and I love my home, and I love my neighborhood, and this is not opposite of that.
Okay, so what we're going to do-
So, I don't understand why I haven't heard anything.
Kind of out of order.
What we're going to do is that, I'm going to take comments, and they're going to have to come to the mic so that we can hear you on the television, et cetera, and you give us your name and address. And this is the start of the public hearing with respect to our process at the planning board, and this is the opportunity for neighbors to give us their comments. We were just curious as to how much outreach has already been done. So, it's not that you haven't missed anything in terms of our process and the site plan approval process that we run at the planning board, okay? So, we'll just keep going through that. All right, so, Ned, now if you don't mind, we will have you part here. And again, and anybody who wants to come up, I'll just have you, give me a raise your hand. When you come to the microphone, just give us your name and address, and if you have questions or comments, that's what we're looking for, okay? Yes, sir, come on forward.
I'm Sam Perkins, I'm on 54 Bradley Road, which is about two-thirds of the way down Bradley Road towards Rush Hill Road from the site. The question I have about traffic is that by moving the entrance point as far away from the traffic light as possible, you're moving it to a point that's over the crest of the hill at Bradley Road and Atherton Street. And I wonder whether at peak traffic times, when parents are trying to get in to the site and maybe backed up on Blue Hill Avenue, whether there's a risk there that people coming up Blue Hill Avenue, which can be a very speedy route when there's a green light, there's some risk of rear-end collisions in that situation. The other question I had is, if there are parents who are dropping off their kids who come down Blue Hill Avenue heading in-town, are they going to be turning left across the traffic into the parking lot, which I think presents a dangerous situation?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who, this would be a question for the traffic consultant, is there anyone else who has questions about traffic and parking and access, so we might concentrate those questions first? Sure, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Mary McCallum, I'm at 231 Atherton-
You're welcome to have a seat.
Oh, surely, thank you.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
I'm Mary McCallum, I'm at 231 Atherton Street. About 150 feet of my backyard is directly across from the site plan.
So, are you on the same side of the road as Atherton, or you're across?
I'm on the opposite side.
On the opposite side?
Of 138.
Okay.
Okay, and it was brought up on several meetings that there was going to be an effort and advocacy for people pulling out of the parking lot to be able to cross 138 and head north into Boston. That was concerning to me, I'm concerned because if that congests cars in that area, people will be parking all along my yard. Again, I'm on the 138, right along 138, about 150 feet. One of the other concerns, many of the people that I've spoken to in this, we've seen the, Mr. Gawkerin lay out the anticipated number of cars there, and I think today it was four. What's never been discussed is deliveries, supplies, pampers, office supplies, children's supplies, food. What's never been discussed in the hours of operation is when a cleaner's going to be there, when is cleaning going to be conducted during the day from 6:00 to 6:30 on weekends, after-hours? It has been raised a number of times that there's going to be after-hours, children's issues, activities on weekends, and we were concerned about parking then. I know most of the neighbors I've been speaking with are concerned about the overflow parking falling onto our properties or falling in front of our homes, which would inhibit the ease, the- ease, the convenience of moving in and out of our driveways.
Can I just ask for clarity here, I'm gonna make sure I understand.
Yeah.
So there's a concern about when exiting that people would actually do this?
Yes, yeah, well, there was, I was told that that was gonna be, there was gonna be effort made for that to be done.
Right, okay. So I just want, like, the way this is laid out right now, it's right turn only-
Do we go south?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, okay, that's, but that's the concern that both of you have raised, right? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
The traffic, the amount of traffic in the area, people that are in that area, I know you're all familiar with it, it's increasingly congested. From two-thirty on in the afternoon, it takes over one-half an hour to get from that parking lot going south to one-twenty-eight. And that's, that's a bit much, it's the amount of traffic that's gonna increase from, and that's two-thirty in the afternoon. Forget about five, six, seven, the Boston people leaving, heading home, or the people heading in-town in the morning. An issue has come up, and it's been raised, considering the disruption to our immediate neighborhood, the need these neighbors in particularly, has there been any effort, and what is the plan, if any, to serve the population, the immediate population of Milton in this endeavor? Is there any consideration for a service to Milton families? Milton, the immediate area, or is it just gonna be open to all surrounding communities? That was an issue. I think, but the congestion, the traffic ongoing was a huge question for most of us, changing the whole feel of the neighborhood. I see my neighbors here that ride their horses up the street and struggle with that intersection a lot. I see my neighbors here walking their dogs all the time, kids walking from the bus stops back and forth on foot.
Excuse me, where is the bus stop in front of you?
The bus stop, it changes, depends on your bus driver, I think, yes, in most things. It has stopped in front of my house, Zerrian stops up the street-
On Atherton, then?
On Canton, and the kids walk down and cross over Blue Hill. I think Boston, I think B.C. High closes up the street, they walk down the street, you would know better than me on this one, crosses, oh, and walks across the street.
Southfield and Moon High School stopped yet.
Yeah.
Are there sidewalks?
There's a narrow one on, on, on the, I don't know, it's the north side of Atherton, walking from Canton down to, down to the intersection where this is located.
But not on Blue Hill?
There's not, nothing on Blue Hill, no. But the kids are all on foot. Some kids are on Blue Hill Avenue, they cut through my yard, they're getting a little bit older now, so I don't see them as much, you know? But there's a lot of kids in the early morning, your kids are on the street.
Yeah, they go out at a little bit before seven.
Yeah, and so-
So on that, on that topic, Bill, maybe you should mention to these folks that the state's planning efforts in terms of one thirty-eight, right?
Right, the state has undertaken a corridor study of one thirty-eight, which will go from the south side of Canton to the north side of Milton.
The town Canton, not Canton Ave.
Right.
I mean, it's all the way through town, all the way through Milton.
Canton Ave all the way through Canton, and-
No, one thirty-eight through.
One thirty-eight all the way through Canton, one thirty-eight all the way through Milton is being considered by the corridor study. So that comment about no sidewalks on one thirty-eight, the new plan actually does have sidewalks in it, the new plan does have bikeways in it. It does-
Crossings?
It has crosswalks, it is much more pedestrian safety, it's much more planning for pedestrian safety.
So if they wanted to see those plans, where could they find those?
Online, you just Google one thirty-eight corridor study, and they're, the recommended improvements for every section of one thirty-eight are on there.
So Bill, are they still taking comments?
They are. The project was supposed to be twenty-twenty-three, I know it's being pushed out, it's probably twenty-twenty-five now before, because of the size of the project and the budget of the project has really, it's just grown huge, so.
Okay. All right, just in case people aren't familiar with it, would you like to come forward?
Yeah, well, first I wanna reiterate your points, and I won't take up your time by restating them, but the, the traffic issues-
I'm sorry, can you give us your name and address?
I'm Miyoko Sato, I live at two-one-six Atherton. So I am on the section of Atherton between Blue Hill and Canton, but I face one thirty-eight. So I am diagonally across from the fire station. So I know the bird's-eye view photos you show, show lots and lots of trees, so if they were that thick all the way to the bottom, I wouldn't see what you guys are doing, but there's trunks, so I can actually see the culture property very clearly. So my concern about safety has to do with what I have lived with for a decade, being right on the corner of one thirty-eight and Atherton. So I am concerned about pedestrian safety, but I'm telling you people's speed on that road. So it peaks, right? As you go down one thirty-eight toward this site, it's an uphill, so people see that light and they wanna get through that light, 'cause there's five roads that dump into that intersection. And the intersection where I am, the Atherton light, is a short one. So people are trying to blast up Blue Hill Avenue, they drive very fast, and if you read the corridor study, they show you what the average speed is at different times, so they, I think it was that seven-day study, was that right? They did, their, their analysis covered a seven-day period, I think?
They did, and there'll actually be more coming. They've come up with several different, several different options, and they haven't chosen which one to do yet, so they'll come back and do it again.
Do another study, so you can see what the statistics are for accidents, what kind of accidents happen there, and that this intersection is considered a dangerous intersection. So people drive very fast down Blue Hill. Now, on Atherton, it's worse. So people cut through Canton, down Atherton to get onto Blue Hill Avenue with their, just as fast as they can get there, even if they see it's a red light, for some reason they have to go very quickly. So to walk to the bus stop, 'cause I have three kids in the Milton Public School, they do walk down a sidewalk, they have to cross Atherton on foot, it is extremely dangerous. They report to me on a regular basis how almost got hit, you know, another person almost hit us, another girl is at the bus stop, she almost got hit. People are flying during rush hour, just trying to get down Atherton. So I know there are improvements on Blue Hill Avenue that are proposed in the corridor study, I don't know when they're actually gonna be implemented, but I don't know what happens to the traffic on Atherton Street. If someone wants to get to this site off of Canton Ave, they are gonna fly down Atherton Street. So I think the conditions there are already dangerous, I think this makes it more dangerous. That corridor study did not take into consideration the traffic that's gonna be increased as a result of this, so are, is there going to be a traffic study done based off of what occurs if this is constructed and fully operational? Even just now, what's happening now with traffic? It's already dangerous. It's crazy. And so because I am on the corner, I am also been witness to a number of the accidents. I am the person who called nine-one-one in, in the summer and ran out to the accident site there, so it is truly dangerous.
Okay, thank you. Yes, please come forward.
I'm Grumpy Barb Vonnegut, and I'll try to be nicer, but I'm not happy about this in Ferguson.
I'm sorry, Barb, you said Barb, right?
Barb Vonnegut, and then E-G-U-T, two thirty, Atherton.
Thank you.
So to Miyoko's point, exactly, when they put in the sidewalk going down our street two or three years ago, we now have, and I've tried to complain to the town about this, but no one seems to wanna listen to me, they say people drive too fast, which is true, but what they do is they turn the corner, coming up Canton Ave, turn right on Atherton Street, going too fast probably, but my husband and I get out there probably at least once or twice a month for somebody who's blown a tire, coming or blown two tires, hitting the curb coming around right in front of our house. So we're dealing with strangers like all the time because they're coming too fast. I don't understand why there can't be like something at that corner, which is another very dangerous corner. So the corner where Dexter Southfield, I don't know, some of the other schools that have buses that stop there, but those kids are getting out in the middle of Namagros, this isn't totally relevant to the new plan, but it is in the sense that it's all locked in, right? Like they're coming down my street like at, you know, high speed of, you know, high rate of speed because they wanna get to the red light. And my point is like, why are they going fifty miles an hour down Atherton Street when they are gonna have to stop at that light? Like, it's crazy. But it's a problem, I mean, it's a, it's a significant problem. We're talking like some two strange guys, like pulled in off the curb, you know, whatever. I mean, we just keep constantly having this issue. And there is, there is a ton of traffic on Atherton Street already, I don't see how this is gonna work. My son went to Thatcher Montessori for a year, and I saw the traffic down there and how hard that was. This seems to me not dissimilar in terms of the number of kids, the number of parents. I mean, we run a pediatric office in Quincy, I see what traffic is with kids and their, and their moms, and, you know, I mean, it's a nightmare. You know, so I just don't see how that's gonna really be successful there with everything else that we have going on in town. And I am, you know, a little distressed, to say the least, that I really haven't, I've heard about this, but really just word of mouth. And I don't understand why, you know, we as, you know, residents of twenty-two years who live, yes, we're not a butters, but we live three doors up from where this is all gonna happen, and it's certainly gonna affect what happens on Atherton Street. And these guys are right, I won't reiterate it, but the number of, every single street on our house, every single house on our street has dogs, has kids, right? Like, I mean, it's a very community-oriented neighborhood, and we, many of us have been there twenty-plus years, Mary, me, Miyoko's been there a long time, right, everybody. I mean, so we're very, you know, protective of our community, and I feel like this is gonna be, you know, just difficult. It's not that we don't love kids, my husband's a pediatrician, for God's sakes, like, we love kids. We'd probably get more patients, but I just don't, you know, that's not the way I wanna get them, like, I just want it to be, I understand and appreciate that they made it safer and smaller, but I still feel like it's gonna be too big in the traffic coming down our street. That's where people go, they go down Atherton. There's no other, you know, Dollar Lane is the next street, which is what, like a mi, is that right? Like a mile and, is anybody up? Whatever, it's like a good ways up, it's like a mile, mile and a half up from us. So they don't have any choices to cross over to one thirty-eight, other than coming down Canton Ave, I mean, Atherton Street, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Paul Carty, I live at three sixty Randolph Ave. I only recently heard about the Little Sprouts proposal, and I can't speak to the neighbors, to the neighborhood, but I can say as a father of a young, of two young kids, that the opportunity for more daycare opportunities in Milton is encouraging to me, especially, I think, given the proposal that I saw that was able to chart at other locations the arrival and highest traffic. So, like I said, I can't speak to the concerns of my fellow neighbors, but I'm encouraged by the opportunity to have a fairly kinda closed, closed gate or closed, a set number of seats at this school that would, as you said, maybe find out if they could potentially serve the Milton community first and foremost. So I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Susan Payne, and I live at one sixty-five Atherton Street, so I am two houses, or I'm just at one house back, behind the proposed site. My question is, and this is really, I went to the meeting at Tom's way back when, I didn't hear of any other subsequent meetings, but my question is, I know that Tom tried to get some permits so that he could have, he wanted to do like more of a commercial-type business, and it was denied, Tom Coulter.
Oh, okay.
He was denied, and I assumed that that was a residential property, I didn't realize that it was a commercial property unless a school somehow squeaks under and you can, and which does not seem right to me. I'm the one with horses, so I'm bringing the human neighborhood aspect to the table, and it's horrible. I can't even get across to the Blue Hills anymore. So when I go, I was writing a song for Mary the other day, but I can't even ride my horse down the street, I have to take my horse on the sidewalk because the cars go so fast, and I think it's tragic. And one other thing, I will, there are Friday nights, I really think someone needs to assess the traffic situation. There have been Friday nights where I literally cannot get home, and I have parked my car down the street, gotten out, walked home so I can make dinner for my daughter, gone back and picked up my car. So it's really bad. Fridays are the worst, and now it's becoming Thursday night, a Thursday night issue as well. So I think this whole thing is really awful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just answer the, one comment that you had about the use. The state regulates that schools, houses of worship, daycare facilities can be located in locations regardless of what the underlying, what the zoning is in those locations. So we, as a town, don't have any jurisdiction over that use on this site. We, as Ned said when he started, there's, we have jurisdiction over dimensional scale of building, et cetera. I think when we're looking at parking and access, but the actual use of this, on this site, we don't have any say over.
I would also just add, I represented Tom Coulter when we secured his permission to operate a landscaping business at the site, so it was, historically, this site has never been just a residential site. It was a public school, it was a nursery, it was a greenhouse, it was a landscape business with the residents, it's never been just a single-family residence, it's always been a mix of things. So, and Tom Coulter had permission to operate, went through a zoning change to do it.
Thank you for that background. Is there anyone else here who would like to provide some questions or to ask questions to provide feedback? Yes?
Hi, so my name is Oriola Jide, I'm the direct abutter on one seventy-five Atherton Street. I want to sort of reiterate that the first meeting we had was over a year ago, and being the direct abutter, I wasn't informed of that meeting, it was from my neighbors that I heard about the meeting despite being the direct abutter. I still, I know you mentioned in your presentation that now your current proposal is even closer to our line, I would like to know more about sort of the exact current setback. The other issue I want to raise is that all the meetings we've had, we've repeatedly said that we wanted a traffic study because of the issue of safety around the traffic area, and that still hasn't been done despite the conversations for over a year, so I want to raise that up again.
Yes?
Patricia McCallum, one twenty, two thirty-one Atherton Street, and I just want to reiterate what everyone's saying about the traffic, because we're adding one hundred and twenty-four drop-offs, twice, at pickups, so twice a day, and we're also adding the staff coming and going in this area, and also any deliveries for supplies, et cetera. And also the idea that there might be weekend and evenings functions for grandparents to come and family to come and see plays, et cetera. It's just gonna be crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Patrick Greeley, I live on one forty-nine Bradley Road. My family's been there for about sixty-seven years. I've seen the study and everything, I've looked at everything. The traffic situation that everybody's been talking about, my road, Bradley Road, is just a racetrack, and that actually leads on to Atherton Street, and Atherton Street leads on to Bradley Road, it's a very vicious circle there. But on actual days, you're talking about traffic backed up from the one thirty-eight corridor all the way to Robin Street, most days. Now, I worked at Coulter's for a while, and I've seen the traffic, I've seen the craziness that goes on in that street. You have hundreds of trucks that travel on that street every day, coming in and out of the city. You have wide loads, trailers, cranes, everything moves on that, never mind just the regular traffic going in and out. Now, my road, Milton Street, has turned into outrageous cut-throughs- Now, my road, Milton Street, has turned into outrageous cut-throughs because people don't want to wait in the Ponson Valley Parkway. Now, Ponson Valley Parkway gets backed up to Paul's Bridge, Brushel Road going by Fuller Village gets backed up almost down to the Ponson Valley Parkway. And now Reedville's about to put in some gigantic condo setups right in, over the Reedville Bridge on Sprague Street, 200, 300 condos. So, I don't know where everybody's going to go, but when you look at the size of the building and everything, when they just showed, when Ned was showing from up above, you notice that that big, huge, white building is in the middle of all these nice little houses. You know, I mean, it's ridiculous to have something that size in that area. Now, people go up my street, now I was just waiting, just going to pick up a neighbor to come up, who's the abutter right behind Coulter's. Now, she has a terrible time just coming out of her driveway. Mrs. Moody, who lives right to the left, now they moved the driveway down, now her driveway is right there. Now, she has a terrible time, as it is right now, just trying to get in and out of her driveway. Now, the traffic on that street, at night, in the mornings, you're talking easy 65 miles an hour. No question about it. I mean, some of the trucks make noises, you can hear them up on Robin Street. Now, where the playground sits, I've been there for a very long time, I've seen at least 10 cars pracked up in that, where that playground is. On their roofs, all smashed up, because when they come up, the people clip them and that's exactly where they go. Right into that playground. What you're also talking about, you have a bunch of kids screaming. Unfortunately, we have Curry College is another 100 yards to our right and the athletic field is right there. So we have them till 10 o'clock at night, every night screaming and yelling. And then in the summer, they have sports camps, seven nights a week. So you have 200 to 300 kids on that field till 9 o'clock at night, 7:30 in the morning till 9 o'clock at night screaming and yelling. So, you know, for where we are and where everything sits, and it's an echo chamber there, you know, it's an actual amphitheater. Where Curry sits up on that hill, everything comes right back up. So you're talking about hearing screaming from one side and screaming from the other side, and five planes going over your head. Where are you supposed to hide? You can't hide anywhere. But I mean, I've seen it enough where, I mean, just coming out today, as the women on the Atherton Street neighbors, as I came up to Bradley Road, and I see it every morning, at least two cars blast through that red light. Every morning while I'm sitting there, and it's pure red, and I just lay on my horn as they go flying by. And that's exactly where, and when you're talking about people in the Little Sprouts, they have to get out, walk their kids in every day, drop them off and go back out to where cars. So when that place gets backed up and the people start heading on Blue Hill Avenue and those guys are coming over the top because they're late for work, it's just a cluster. Tommy Coulter, the entrance that Ned's talking about on Atherton Street was never there. Never there when I was a kid, never there. Tommy actually, I don't know if it was legal or not when he did it, but he couldn't get his trailers on, out onto Blue Hill Avenue. People would not let him out. So he actually had to open that back gate up himself so he could come out to use that light, so he could actually get out, get his trailers out. And in the afternoons, when they would come down Atherton Street to get back into the yard, they couldn't get back into the yard. We actually had to go out with a machine a few times and actually block the traffic with a front-end loader, just to get the guys, because they were backed up on Atherton Street. And that's almost every day. Every day you see it. So to stick something like that in this area now, and one question I do have, Ned, fire was, that property is at a slant, comes down like this. So you're saying one floor, but to make it one floor, you're going to have to dig down and level everything off. So now you'd be driving down and, correct? So now the new property owners right here that live right here, you know, they just moved in and this is what they're going to get? I mean, in that photo there, it looks like it's 20 miles away, but it's not. From where those kids will be playing in that yard, you're probably 50, 60 feet from their front door. You know, I mean, it's, and then now we're adding on to the fire station.
Well, you've opened up a whole lot of things that we actually don't unfortunately have any say over with this application, but...
I understand that, but I mean, the traffic thing is the biggest thing. You're looking for a problem. I mean, there's no question about it. As I said, long time I've been there. I've seen it go from my street is now a racetrack.
Unfortunately, every neighborhood where we're hearing a project of any sort come through, we hear the same things about traffic. It's one of the things that the town's been trying to be a little more proactive about. And there's been, for the last year, a committee, the Traffic Mitigation Committee that was the select board formed, and they've done a lot of work and analysis, and they just issued a draft report with some recommendations for the town to start to address some of the cut-through traffic. And then also, the town has hired a traffic engineering company to do some work in creating a model that will help look at if adjustments are made one place, what the, it actually models what the changes would be in traffic conditions. You've probably seen where sometimes just one ways get popped up and one, used to go one way to go someplace in town and now you can't. And it's going to take a look at how those work.
I mean, Canton Avenue gets backed up.
Yes, I know, because I also live on Canton Avenue, so I do know that.
So Canton Avenue gets back. I mean, you're trapped like a rat, you can't get out of there. I mean, when we used to go to Canton, we used to go down into Westwood and come up University Ave and come over the 95. That's the only way you can get to Canton.
So we will have the applicant address the traffic and safety concerns, but I just also wanted to make everyone aware that these traffic issues are some, really some significant town-wide because of our proximity to Boston and the traffic conditions and people getting off the highway in various places and trying to make their way through.
No, Ponson Valley Parkway is obviously a huge issue.
Right.
Obviously. Just one quick thing, too. Just in a mile radius, the old temple has a school. Now, right past Robin Street, there's a school. So now you want to put a school at the top of Atherton Street, and you have Curry College, and you have Fuller Village, and you have Montessori.
Once again, we can't...
Oh, I understand that, but I'm just saying, that's, I'm not saying because of the school, I'm just saying, you know, how many schools could be in a one-mile area? And true, how many Milton kids are actually going to go to that school?
Well, we can ask about some other outreach to who they anticipate their customer base will be, we'll get, we can get to that. So thank you, thanks for your questions and comments. Is there anyone else? Okay, so Ned and team, I think your traffic engineer is going to need to take, see front and center over here. You know, there was in our packet, and maybe the public's not aware, you have a memorandum, which is not necessarily a traffic study, but if you want to go through your memorandum and then talk, address the concerns that you heard from the neighbors, okay?
And a couple of other quick points. The frontage, I know that Sam asked this early. You know, you do come up from further north as you're heading south on 138, but the entire frontage of this property is flat. It's not, it's not...
I have some questions about, well, that's different from roadway. I have other questions about grading, not related to roadway, but...
The separate issues about grading as you drop, as the site drops down into Atherton Street. But the frontage along 138 is flat and visibility is good. And citing it as far away from the light, you at least take advantage of the light from a plating perspective for cars to be able to get in and get out. There are single-family driveways up and down both sides of 138. People have to navigate their way in and out of those driveways. They have to cross 138. They do it safely every day. We anticipate that our customers will do safely as well.
All right, so if there's, to the extent that there's some possibility, so that any improvements could be made at the intersection with the signalization or what have you, but, you know, let's first have Kim, but if I were to say, help with pronunciation of your last name there.
The last name is Hans of Rady, but Kim is just fine.
Okay. If you could go through your analysis and then address the questions that you heard.
Sure, I might actually sort of bind them as it comes to me. We did a traffic assessment memorandum that includes the trip generation and parking. It's not a full traffic impact and access study, the 100-page document or 100-page plus when you include the appendices. And the reason it's not is because we did a trip generation calculation based on Institute of Transportation Engineers methods, and the numbers are not large enough to call for a full traffic impact and access study. The numbers we're talking about are numbers that would not be noticeable in the grand scheme of things. And it doesn't even take into account the concept that the site did have traffic on it before with the landscaping business, and some of that traffic was trucks.
Can I just, because we hear this frequently about the standards and how the increased traffic is not going to be significant, but for people who live in the, in, you know, areas that there are new developments going in and they live that every day, if you could just, like, give us a little context, like, there's, I'm sure, thousands of trips at any given time here, just give us some kind of overview.
A couple of things. If you break down, I'm going to give the actual numbers, the trips, I'm going to do it two ways. One is based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the other is based on those other two sites that we looked at, actually primarily for parking, but you can get an idea of what the traffic is by looking at their numbers. What we focus on are the street peak hours. We don't focus on the daily number because the daily number is something that's spread out over the whole day and it doesn't, the operations happen during short periods. The congested periods aren't all day, they're for shorter periods than all day, and that's what we look at. We look at the peak, the street peak periods. And the Institute of Transportation Engineers has a manual called the Trip Generation Manual, and they have actual trip counts that have been done at facilities similar to this, of different sizes in terms of floor area or students or whatever. And that's what we use in the profession as our first go-to way of calculating trips. And if you look at the table, it is, on the table, on the screen, and I appreciate that, the AM peak hour shows a trip generation of 90 trips, 48 in and 42 out. And the PM peak hour shows 89 trips, 42 in, 47 out. And those numbers are strictly by the book for 124 students. Now, not all of those trips are going to be new to the area. You have primary trips that are new to the area and non-primary trips that are not new to the area. In other words, when someone goes to a facility such as this, they usually are trying to do it on their way to or from somewhere else. That would be the goal. And it works out roughly half and half. So the primary trips during the morning peak hour aren't the full 90. It's 40 trips, 23 in and 17 out. And for the afternoon peak hour, it's not 89 trips, that's a total. The primary trips are 39, and it's 17 in and 22 out. Now, if you look at those numbers, let's call it 40 trips that are added to the area during the morning peak hour, the afternoon peak hour, half of those trips, and I'm simplifying here and rounding off, half of those trips are coming into the site, half of those trips are coming out of the site. And then, on average, half the trips are to and from the north and half the trips are to and from the south. It might, it's not going to be exactly even, but on average. So 40 trips divided by two for in and out is 20, and then divided by two again, that's 10. So that works out to an average of 10 trips per direction, north or south of the site on Blue Hill Avenue. And when you compare that with the traffic that's already out there, that's a very small number. And again, those numbers are based on real-world data collected by the Institute of Transportation Engineers and published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Then another way of looking at things that I really didn't highlight in the memorandum, but you can see in the appendix, is the appendix available to put up there? There's some spreadsheets in the appendix. And...
Is that the data from Dedham?
Right.
Your other Dedham stuff?
I'll just use that one as an example. See that column change in students? You can see that the students don't come in all in a rush. It's not like a normal school where the bell goes off at 8 o'clock and you have all these people coming all at once. These people are coming over a more spread-out time period. People might be on their way to work. It's on, it's on a different sort of a schedule, so you can see that column change in students. You see the students start to arrive early in the morning at 6:15 and they tail off around that 9:30. And then in between, you have kind of a peak in the middle, but it's spread out. It's not, it's not like an elementary school where you have a giant amount of cars all at once.
So, can I just ask you while we're here?
Sure.
So if you look at the 8:00 AM time slot and the change in students is 34, and if we have 30, was it 33 parking spaces?
Bill, let me back up on that. 7:45, are you looking at the 7:45, 34?
I'm looking the Dedham prorated for Milton. Is that the different chart? Is that the one before?
Yeah, that's probably a different page.
All right, I'll go back to, you're at the Dedham prorate?
Okay, that right there is the raw data from Dedham.
Can you go to the next page, Bill?
If you want to see the next page, that's bumped up to reflect the students and staff that you have in Milton. Okay, so you're showing the 8:00 AM where you have 34 students arriving.
So are we having 34 students arriving within 15 minutes of one another from 7:45 to 8 o'clock? Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
And we have 33 parking spaces, is that right?
That is also correct.
And at 8:00 AM, we have 12 staff taking up 12 of those 33 parking spaces?
Correct.
So have you done an analysis where all these cars are going to be between 7:45 and 8? Are they going to be on the street? Are they going to take up the parking lot?
Yes, we have.
And there's one thing to point out, like, within each 15-minute window, it doesn't mean that all 34 cars are going to be parked on the location at the same time. So you can even break it down into five-minute increments. And so when you, if you were to divide, so let's say, on average, a pickup-drop-off time is going to be five minutes for a parent to drop off...
Do you have children?
Yes, I do, I have three. Thank you for asking.
Excuse me, the parents bring the children inside, right? You don't have staff that meet them at the curbside?
Correct. So, let's assume a parent...
Brian had signed in.
Okay, let's, let him answer. Okay, thank you. All right, please continue.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Kim. Now, the way, if you, the way the parking works is, the way the drop-off works, parents park in a parking space and they go in and they drop their children off inside the building. So let's look at the numbers on the screen. You see the number of employees you have each 15-minute interval? We assume that each of those employees is going to be one employee, one car. In other words, we're not thinking in terms of reducing for carpooling or transit use or anything like that. We assume the lowest possible vehicle occupancy, one employee, one car. And then for the students, we looked at the change in students each 15 minutes. So for that 15 minutes, you mentioned the 34, the operational information we have from other facility is, it's a five-minute time span each vehicle will be there. And within each 15 minutes, there are three five-minute periods. So 34 divided by 3 is 11 and change, we rounded it up to 12. Okay, so if you look at the right-hand three columns, we have, excuse me, you have 12 people parked there for, you have 12 vehicles parked there for employees, and then you have 34 divided by 3 is 11, and you round it up to 12, and that should work out to be the 15 you see on the right, okay? So 34 students in 15 minutes divided by 3 is 11, rounded it up to 12, and you have, you have employees there, you have 12 employees there and it, and it should add up to 24, actually. Okay? But it's always below, it's always below 27 when you max it out, if you look at all the periods.
Well...
Or 27 or below.
I think I might like to request a little more information about this time period in particular, but...
The five minutes?
The 7:45 to 8, which seems like the largest concentration.
Yep.
And maybe some other, if you have other locations besides Dedham, I know when you were here before, you said that you have multiple... were here before, you said that you have multiple locations, so if you have some data and if you operationally have any ability to stagger your time periods in which people can drop off. We have, I think, very legitimate concerns about the number, we're not talking about the fact that the use can be here, but the numbers of cars that are coming in and out of this location, and I think it's a fair question about...
I'm troubled by that, actually.
You are?
Yeah. Because under Dover Amendment, you can really only regulate the size of the building, the setbacks. You can't control the density, you can't control the screening, you can't control the traffic. It's really the height and the structures, the yard size, lot area, that sort of thing. There's really limits on what you can, you know, regulate under the Dover Amendment.
Well, the size of building that they've got is, you know, on one story is dictating how many parking spaces they have and that in turn...
But I'm just, I'm just, I'm just cautioning you that that's not something that we could then say, oh, we have to impose conditions based upon our traffic understanding. I don't think that's something that's going to be allowed under Dover Amendment cases. You can check with town council, but...
So just putting in perspective, the average, according to the 138 corridor study, the average daily trips for this route in this vicinity is 10,500 average daily trips. And the peak hour AM, which they measure 7:30 to 8:30, is 1,250 vehicles at that intersection.
So the question is, how many are trying to come into this site and how close it is to an intersection and whether they'll actually be able to fit at their peak period all the cars that are coming onto this site. And that's part of a site plan. It's, you know, if they can't, if they can't fit enough...
I'm sorry. It's, but Cheryl, seriously, you know, I'm looking at the advice right here to cities and towns from risk management on the insurance company that insures cities and towns. And it says right in here that, you know, that under the Dover Amendment, reasonable regulations regarding the bulk and the height of the structures, yard size, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking and building coverage requirements are certainly things that we can consider under the Dover Amendment. Other zoning regulations regarding, for example, density, screening, traffic, and signage are not enforceable against a Dover-protected project.
We're talking about whether 33 parking spaces are adequate with, also with being able to queue people for drop-off and so that does...
Well, I'm just saying, you can, you can consider it, but you can't be weighing it as much as you'd like to. Okay? All I'm just saying is that...
Can I just ask a question, though? In relation to what you're saying, if they're asking for six or seven waivers, don't we have more...
Variances.
Variances, I'm sorry, variances, then, then we should be able to say, well, we don't...
They're not coming to us for variances. They're going to the zoning board for the variances.
Right, but they're coming to the town for variances.
They're coming here for site plan approval.
That's a separate...
And this is site plan approval, but, but, I mean, they're going right up against the abutters property.
That's certainly something we can consider.
Okay.
Dimensional, dimensional things, yes, but, but the traffic issues, not so much.
But if the dimensional issues, I mean, basically to get them...
Well, I was asking how many people are going to be able to fit in this parking lot at their maximum peak period in 15 minutes? Because if they can't fit them all, then they're going to need a larger parking area. And that's certainly site plan approval in terms of whether it's adequate parking and adequate queuing space. Whether the impact on Blue Hill Avenue, they've supplied us with data and it's up to the traffic engineer to tell us that they're not going to have any impact beyond the 10,000 cars that April says are here on the peak hour.
Well, I'm not saying, I don't know. No, I mean, we all know, we all know that Blue Hill is terrible. And as Cheryl said, every, every section of this town is impacted, certainly East Milton, where I live, is impacted by cut-through traffic and all that sort of stuff. We can't really be asking, well, I'm saying, we can't be asking this applicant with a Dover-protected use to solve the traffic problem on Blue Hill Avenue.
We can ask them to make sure that they're providing for their need on their site, though.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm trying to get at, is if during their maximum drop-off and pickup time, when they have 34 students coming, that they can accommodate all of that drop-off and pickup and staff on this park, in this parking lot. And I guess I, from what I heard, I'm concerned that it's not possible. That's why I said I'd maybe like to see a little more data about that time period.
A couple of things. We looked at more data. We looked at, we looked at Dedham, we looked at Norwood, we looked at Institute of Transportation Engineers parking generation numbers. And the number of parking spaces is based on, on all that is appropriate. It accommodates, it accommodates the employees, it accommodates the drop-offs and the pickups. And again, the drop-offs and the pickups tend to be spread out a little bit. It's not like, like an elementary school where there are a lot of drop-offs at once. So all the data we have says it does fit on the site. It fits in the parking. It doesn't spill out onto Blue Hill Avenue or Atherton Street or anywhere else.
Can I ask a question? So the two sites that you identified as comps essentially for this, are the, is that because it's a suburban location or it's similar size or how did you pick those two out of all your centers?
Part of it, the facility, the facility needed, they needed to find places where it was kind of separate from other parking so they could keep tabs. They wanted to be able to look at the facility in a comparable location without too much commingling with, with other uses. And they tried to keep it as comparable as they could. And maybe, maybe you can answer that.
And size is the reason. So Norwood, for instance, has a licensed capacity of 133 students, albeit it doesn't run at capacity. I believe it, it's 86 in our analysis.
And does the permit have a similar parking ratio to what you propose here?
Yes, it does. And with 33 spaces for a school of this size, we've never had an issue at any of our schools with, like having inadequate parking. And in fact, you know, when we presented this plan a month, you know, about a month's time ago, maybe even more than that, the planning board asked us to consider an informational session to reduce the number of parking spots. And we thought that would be imprudent because...
I didn't like that suggestion.
Yeah, because, because we think we need it. We think we need it.
There was a comment about the peak of that road and I know you keep saying that it's flat. I travel this road a lot and I don't feel like it is flat, but I wonder if this is something that our town engineer has taken a look at any of this stuff and had any feedback? And I'm not calling you a liar. I'm just saying sometimes people have different perceptions, right?
The front, I'm just saying that the length of this property at the curb is flat. Now, the entire road is crowned.
Right.
And much longer, this, this property is fairly flat along its frontage.
Somebody made a comment about people rushing to get through the light and I think I made that same comment the last time you were here. I would love to know if we could have John Thompson weigh in on any concerns you might have about safety and location of the driveway?
The alternative location, the only alternative location for the driveway...
Is closer to the light.
Is on Atherton Street.
Oh, because of your safety design?
We either have to move the building to the other end of the property to accommodate an Atherton Street entry and exit. In that case, we only provide 27 parking spaces. We can't provide as many parking spaces here, which would make that drop, pickup and drop-off more difficult. It'll introduce conflicts with traffic on Atherton Street. It introduces conflicts potentially with the fire station operation. So for those reasons, we intentionally moved the driveway, we moved the building to Atherton Street and we moved the build, the fires, the entry and exit as far away as we could, listening very carefully to Jack Grant's specific concerns about the, that alternative location.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
There was another comment about accidents at the light going, spilling over into this playground area, which it seems to make sense to me. Is there going to be some sort of a barrier? What are you going to do about safety there?
Doobie ballards are on the playground area.
So even if there wasn't a crash, cars aren't going to go barreling into little kids?
Hopefully not, of course not. Let me go back, if I could, to a couple of issues. Jim Bray, one of the, are the ownership development team. I understand that Dover Amendment does not, the traffic issue is something, which you're absolutely correct on Dover Amendment, but at the same time, traffic is a concern. It's a concern to these people. It's a concern, it is. It's a concern to us as well because if we can't get people in and out of this location, they're not going to want to come there. So from an economic perspective, it makes sense for us to be able to facilitate people going to and from this school. We have no problem at any of our schools with this issue. And given the increase, the volume here that's, that is on Blue Hill Avenue, our impact is going to be minimal. I, people will disagree with that, but it, when you look at the actual numbers, it's going to be minimal because they're going to be into the building, dropping off their kids, and I would take exception, it takes about five minutes usually, maybe six or seven minutes to drop off a kid. And by the way, I'm sorry that you didn't get a notice, you should have got a notice, but you weren't within the 300 feet legal distance, so we didn't know that you were not on that list. If we had known that, we would have put you on the list, okay? We've been extremely open with people on this whole process. We've had three neighborhood meetings, we've taken everybody's info. We don't need these variances. We can put a building up there without any problem. We don't need anything from the town. We can go and get a billing permit tomorrow. It's cost us a lot of money to do this, to accommodate the town in one regard, to accommodate the neighbors. And it also makes sense for us from an economic perspective. We want a one-story building. It's better for kids. It's much better. We don't want two-story. We can build a two-story. It's going to cost a little bit more money, but what we end up spending on this process is probably going to balance out, to be honest with you. But, but traffic is a concern. One of the problems I see here is an enforcement issue. You know, there's a lot of speeding on Blue Hill Avenue and Atherton. The other gentleman, that gentleman there who worked for Colter, they go like a bad ass health for your neighborhood, okay? You're going to get the police down there more and get some enforcement on there. We're not the problem. We're not going to be the problem. We'll probably join with you in trying to rectify that problem because it's going to impact our business. So I appreciate this and I think that although traffic is not a concern of Dover, it is a concern from a realistic perspective. You can't condition this site plan approval on traffic, however. As far as the proximity of the building to the neighbor, we think it's a much better, it's four-foot difference and we've been very cognizant of your concerns. But the, where the building is going to be is going to be a lot less sightly to you than it is if we go as a matter of right. You're going to, I'd rather see, if I were living there, a small, a shorter building where you're not going to see much of it versus a two-story building where you're going to see the whole thing. To me, it makes sense, even though from the property line perspective, it's closer to the property line, but from a sightline perspective, it's farther from the neighborhood, the neighbor's home. It's a farther distance, as Ned pointed out. So we're taking all of this in. We took it all in. We made a lot of accommodations on this and we think it's a very fair plan and we hope that people can get behind it because we want to be good neighbors when we decide building this place.
The other comments, I think, related to left turn in terms of the traffic comment?
Go ahead. I just had one quick question. Did you compare your site and your parking with the Thatcher Montessori? I just sort of looked online and they have 26 spaces. I don't know how many students they have in that program.
No, we didn't. And one other thing, if I could, Mayor McCallum raised a very good issue about, and her sister about operations. Maybe you could speak to that, some of those issues, Kevin, in terms of how these schools are operated. If you're going to get, you know, grandfather's night, I'm a grandfather of five, so...
Of which I have three.
And he's got three out of the five. But, you know, are they going to be, we don't do all that. I will let, he should talk about the operational perspectives. He sits on the Board of Directors of Little Springs.
So the activity's going to happen within 12 hours each day, 6:30 in the morning to 6:30 in the evening. We don't operate on the weekends. So from a cleaning perspective, we have cleaners come three, three times a week in off-hours, usually in the evening. It's comprised of one or two people who in the evening will clean, clean the school. We don't serve, we don't have a commercial kitchen. We don't serve hot meals. Children bring their lunches to school. We serve dry snacks primarily, which cuts down the amount of food and delivery that's going to show up at, at the school on a regular basis. And our, you know, what you'll typically see is something like an Amazon truck or a Peapod truck dropping off supplies or snacks, usually during the middle of the day, during non-peak hours. You know, we really want to earn the opportunity to serve families in this community and 70% of our families and our students live within a 10-minute drive time, so we very much plan to serve this community. And in fact, the reason why we want, part of the reason why we want to come to this town and earn the ability to serve the families in this town is because there's a real need for early education. We actually think a school twice the size is warranted from a demand perspective for the town because there aren't enough spaces for children to go to school before they enter the public school system or whatever school system they enter traditionally for primary school.
Could you just remind us of the age?
Yeah, so we're, we will start caring for children as, as young as three months old and would care through preschool. And children would, would graduate and go to kindergarten.
Thank you.
We have four infant classrooms, four toddler classrooms and three preschool. But I think one of the points that was asked earlier is a very valid point. You're going to have big trucks pulling in and out of there. That's not at all how this works. Not at all. It's a very different kind of an operation. As the traffic consultant noted, this is not like a standard elementary school. And that's, when I, when I first heard of this, I was thinking, oh my God, people are rushing, it's going to be crazy. Nothing like that. It's very systematic, it's very easy, it's in and out, in and out, in and out. And the traffic is a concern and I think, to me, it's an enforcement issue here. I think you're going to get some people on, down there on Blue Hill Avenue slowing people down, starting writing off some tickets. That's my personal opinion. I live in Walpole. We have a similar situation going on in Walpole, okay? With increased density and so forth. And traffic is always a concern whenever you do any kind of development, rightfully so.
We're working on brakes right now. Pick up traffic, speed limits, an accident year. Just trying to be loud. All right, so I think you have answered the questions that we've heard. Could we ask you a little bit about the 138? We worked... Crossing across 138, Norwood.
Yeah, left turn.
Sorry.
Left turn.
I see that your plan is a right turn only. And I see it's similar to Fuller Village, I think, that's on further down Blue Hill Avenue, is that right? So, I mean, if people are going to try and hop that, is that a curb there that you've added in the middle between the in and out?
It's a mountable curb, I think. I think Boland might know more of the details on that.
Yeah, it's a mountable concrete curb island there.
Does that mean...
That means, that means if you need to, you can, you can go over it without, without doing any damage. It's almost like if you, if you were in a roundabout, they have a truck apron that you can go over if you need to.
Is that necessary or can that actually be a curb?
I was going to say, is the intent to discourage a left turn?
Correct, yeah. And the issue with having it mountable as opposed to full curb is that if a fire engine has to get in, it needs maximum turning with. But it is right in, right in only, right out only. That's partially responsive to Mastat and their future plans for the intersection addressing. They don't, you know, if one of their plans is potential for a roundabout replacing the traffic signal, they're not going to want left out because there'll be a constant...
You said that you met with the town engineer in our department about this location for the access? And this is preferred access over Atherton access?
Jack Grant's exact words were, "This is far superior. The Atherton Street is my worst nightmare."
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say that you had already met with John Thompson.
We met with John Thompson, Chase Berkeley, Chief King, Chief Grant, Joe Prondak, both planning directors. We laid out alternative site plans. We hadn't narrowed the building the way it is exactly now, but we showed the two alternatives. And to a man, it was, it was, please locate your access on Blue Hill Avenue as far away from the intersection as possible.
Okay, so could you, maybe Bill draft a letter and ask those folks to endorse that letter for the record? I'd like to go to the grading plan. I'd like to go to the grading plan. So if I'm understanding the grading plan.
C401.
And if I look at what had been the existing grade, that would be the, I think, the last sheet. If I toggle back and towards, I think I'm looking at along the abutting property line, apparently flat in the gravel area. And then in the, in the grading and drainage plan, I see some contour where now we're going to be higher and we're sloping down to the neighbor, the direct abutter on Atherton Street. And I see two retaining walls along that property line where that stone wall is. And I'd like to see, I think I asked maybe when you were here before, a section through there to understand how, where your fill is, where your existing grade is, and where your proposed grade is, and how you're addressing not having stormwater in your property drained down on, actually both direct abutters because it looks like, I, I'm looking at, for the one where the retaining walls are, it goes to 107, 108, and 109 across a pretty short distance. And then onto the neighbor on Blue Hill Avenue, goes from, from 111 to 110 to 109 again across a fairly short distance. And I want to, I want to make sure that the neighbors aren't going to have, be looking at a pretty, you know, steep slope and getting any stormwater off. And I think they certainly need to understand how tall the retaining wall is that's going to be on that property line. I see top, I think some top of wall elevations of 110 on the one, but I don't see any top of wall called out on the other one, which is next to the parking lot. Then I see a fence along there. So what's the relationship between the stone wall, the retaining wall, the fence, and the curve of the parking lot, which are all lines that are really close together on the plan? So I'd like to see a section there and a section where it gets pretty close to the building. And then a section next to the property line on the other side would be above. So I can point to them. I'd like to see a section here, a section here, and a section over here.
Sure, so we can, we can certainly, you know, take a look at those sections along there. You know, basically, the grade along the rear of the parcel there generally is about 107 contour elevation. There is a drop in elevation along the rear just because the street elevation up on Blue Hill Avenue here about 112. So it's about a five to six-foot drop across the site from Blue Hills Ave towards the west.
Yeah, so if you could show that, like, all the way across.
Correct.
So, you know, I think it's important for us to understand so that this, you know, if there's any, if this is the only way to do it, at least everybody understands what it's going to be before it's actually built. This is particularly for the neighbors who are on the other side of that property line, on those two sides. So there's, because it looks to me like where, where I said was relatively flat, we're building it up from 107 to 108, 109, 110.
Correct.
And how quickly and how steep that is, we would like to understand visually.
Okay, yep, sure.
Let everybody can understand the grading plan and visualize. And then we've had experiences where it turns out different in the field than what we thought. And we just want to make sure that the visuals are something that we have in our record, too.
Sure.
Okay? And then on, I'd like to go to the lighting plan. And that's C703. I think lighting is important. It's going to be important for those two direct abutters again, and possibly even across the street, I suppose. But we require cut sheets for the light fixtures in addition to the photometrics. And if that's actually the shape of this light fixture, I'd like you to reconsider which fixture you're going to use because that's like a highway-style fixture. And we're, we're next to residential abutters. I'd like to see a fixture that's as low as it can be. It needs to be dark sky compliant. And it needs to have, it looks like there's no spill on the neighbors, but until you actually have a fixture, you know, a different fixture than this one, we want to make sure that we actually have a photometric for a fixture that we think is kind of fits in a little bit better with that, with the neighborhood, okay?
I might recommend one of those shields that we had for, for the poultry site. I'm in love with these.
Can we talk about those shields?
Yeah, it's my new thing. No, it's great for the ecosystem. They got them up.
Do you have a suggestion for a fixture?
A suggestion for a fixture?
Suggested fixture that you, that you're happy with?
You have those, right?
So you?
Yeah, you could get them from Allison or Bill.
The one thing about those fixtures, though, is that due to some concerns, we did ask a different developer who's building to add a shield to a fixture once it was installed. So we do want to make sure it, where you've got them next, close to the property line, that, you know, and you can say they're all, all the light's going to go this way from the fixture, but you know that a little bit's going to bleed out in the back. And so a shield that a manufacturer can supply, you know, would be beneficial again. And particularly those that are on the abutting property lines is to keep those like down to a 10 or 12-foot pole rather than 14 or 16 or something. I don't, it doesn't have a height on here, so I don't know.
Maybe we can show them what we approved at Vence, something comparable, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, you can see what was approved at, for the Vence and Ned can talk with us.
I didn't get you that far.
What do you folks think is going to be nice, that's fine with us?
Yeah, I mean, that one was also, has some near, very close nearby neighbors.
Very close neighbors.
And we were concerned with the same things about not being controlled and all that.
Yeah, no, you don't want to be like the neighbors you are. Nobody wants that.
And I can respond to a couple of those comments, too, regarding the lighting. So I, I think from the initial informal meetings, one of the, there was, lighting was also brought up as a concern. So the revised lighting plan shows the light poles, there's only two light poles located internally into the site on the landscape items. Those two, along with the one closer to the Blue Hill Avenue, those are just 18-foot-high light poles. The detail that's shown on the plan, that's just a generic detail, it's not a detail of the actual light fixture. We can certainly provide cut sheets for it, and if they're, you know, in keeping with the style that, that, you know, the town would prefer.
For the parking lights.
And the lighting plan also shows building-mounted lights along the rear of the building. Those are typically, I believe, 10 feet, as I'm looking at this lighting plan. So again, we can, we can certainly provide the cut sheets for those. The, the lighting values that are shown on this, you know, it's a conservative approach. It's not including any vegetation along the property line. It's not including, you know, the fences, they're not modeled in that. It's, this is more of a conservative approach if that didn't exist. So there would be less light spillage off, off the property in the.
So this photometric plan is not actually reflective of particular fixtures?
It's reflective of fixtures. It's not reflective of landscaping and fencing. That's, that's along the property.
Okay, so when you get the cut sheets, when you provide the cut sheets for the parking line, if you could provide the building-mounted picture cut sheets as well?
Sure, oh, correct.
One of the other things that went wrong with this development was they, they had what ended up being really large, like balls of light. And then the, the sensor was maybe not sensitive enough to the natural light, so these lights were on all the time. And then, like I mentioned, the shield for the neighbors or the, you know, the open space or land around it doesn't need the light. So that's what went wrong on the other side. So the timers and the sensors, you don't need as many lumens, and you'll save energy in the process.
So, and at that point, actually, you know, you probably have some of the, want to have some lighting for safety, but if you had things on sensors, you know, that would keep the lights from being on all the time and impacting the neighbors when you're not in operation, you know, for, so I imagine, like particularly around the building. So if you can also look at the dimming capabilities so that they could be dimmed down and then they can go up. Lighting technology has come a long way in that regard.
Allison, Heather. Mrs. Mooney came in today. We had a quick conversation, she had a couple of questions. She is the abutter, if you're on Blue Hill Ave, to the left, yes. The current, I'm sorry, the previous owner had put up a chain-link fence. I think she was hoping that you guys could make a better consideration for screening the abutter.
Yes. What did she want?
I think she'd like a solid fence there.
Six-foot colonial.
I'll let her speak, but I think that's exactly what she was looking.
PVC, white door fence.
Right. Yeah.
Something to have a better.
Your parking right now shines the lights right into her property.
Missing a lot of bits and pieces. Sure, Mrs. Mooney, you got it.
Thank you.
We'll get a nice fence for you, Mrs. Mooney, trust me. We'll do, yeah, no problem.
Okay, we have another item on the agenda. So if there are any individuals who would like to, I'm sorry, if one more person, then that.
Yeah, beside a question. Is it, is it, sorry.
So can you go with your name and address?
Yeah, me, I'm also 175 Atherton, direct abutter. Is it a foregone conclusion that that house would be that close to our property line at the, at the closest edge? I'm, I'm just, like, what are the considerations for the board in trying to give that direction?
That's the zoning board that will be addressing that.
Okay, so do we have any?
Yes, you do. Get notice from the zoning board as you.
March 12th. If I could just respond to that, though, I, we have comparison plans. The as-of-right plan showing the two-story building to the south side of the property is 74 feet from their house. It's further from the lot line. It's 30 feet from the lot line. It's 74 feet from the house. This building is feet from the lot line, but it's 84 feet from the house. It's 10 feet further from the house. We thought that that was a more appropriate setback to think about.
You're not considering if we wanted to expand the house in return, so, in that statement. Plus, every time you say that, I hear that as a, we could, it feels almost like a threat, like, you know, we have the right to do this, so we'll do this regardless of what the neighborhood wants. And I appreciate your statement of, we want to be the friends of the neighborhood. So whenever you say that, I just take that out of the equation for me. So I was just asking about what the variance was and what the process of approving that variance was.
So we, we've asked for a section through there because there's also a retaining wall down there.
Yes.
And I think it would be beneficial very much to understand what's being proposed in that corner there in the event that they can alter it in some way, and that the board of guilty consider that, too.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Can I see two visuals? Oh, sorry, okay. Some of our neighbors couldn't be here tonight. Is there any mechanism for them to get comments to you? The email?
Yes, through the assistant town planner, the town planner, and there are links to their email addresses. Or as Allison said, you can come in and speak to them in their office or call them.
Come in, you can call.
Phil, can you put this visual up? I had a question on this visual. This one? No, you don't have that one?
Do I have?
Or similar to that one? You've had something similar.
It's one of our neighbors.
Oh, yeah. Oh, hi. Hi, Tabor.
Sorry, I thought you said we were going to traffic first and then site plan later, so. No comments for site plan.
Please come up.
Okay. On Tabor, 674 Bushel Road. Last meeting we had at Fuller Village, we discussed the buy-right plan for a 5,000-foot footprint and then the 10,000-foot footprint. And just by looking at the plan on the whole, the 10,000 footer takes up a giant chunk of the space. We had thought about, and a number of us had discussed, why not pushing the 5,000-foot buy-right right up against 138? The ground floor will be at the level of, pretty much is, is the level of the abutters in the rear, but would then be 50 or so feet away from the abutter. The second floor, yes, would be higher, but it would be closer to the ground floor of the existing Coulter Landscape Building. I know that there's some height variation and difference, and I think your point is well-taken about the sections and to find out exactly what we've got, because I know I bought a lot of Christmas trees up there and walked the site, but, you know, that's all different. And I just think that, you know, having that in my backyard would really piss me off. And I think it's just a, you know, it's not fair to them, and I think there's no way that you've really looked at this clearly if you haven't thought about moving that buy-right building on the other side or cutting it down to something a lot closer to 7,000 feet or something, but a lot further off the neighbor's property. Thanks.
Thank you, Tabor. So, so those sections, again, as I, that we asked for should be all the way across the site, and they should show the existing topography and then the proposed topography on the same, so that one and the colored one.
I had a question to follow up on, Tabor, but before I do that, I just wanted to ask, did Chief Grant look at this for the fire truck access to the building? I'm just thinking, this is going to be a hard swing around, especially with this island in the middle. I love having an island in the middle for a lot of reasons, but then I'm worried about fire access.
That's why it's a mountable curb. They would come in and go over the island.
Okay. And, and that's, and he's assessed that, okay.
Look back to the engineer, can answer that question directly.
Correct, so we've run the fire truck through the site, and this fire truck does maneuver through the parking area.
Okay, do you mind showing this visual? So I, I had a question to follow up on what Tabor was saying. So you have all the classrooms on the outside, and you have the administration on the inside. I was wondering if you were to put the part of.
Go ahead with it.
Thank you, thank you, Bill. If we were to put most of the administration on a second floor, move some of the classrooms, two of the classrooms in, you could have, you could give some relief to the neighbors. In other words, you could have a second floor that's not as big as the first floor, some step backs, put the administration and the storage upstairs. And then, you know, you might have to give up one classroom somewhere, but, but you might be able to, to work with some of the setback issues. I was wondering if you had given that any consideration?
Yes, I mean, so we've given a lot of consideration to two-story versus, versus a one-story. And one, one story is like hands, hands down, much more preferable from a safety and operational perspective. So, and to address that specific suggestion, the idea of moving administration upstairs would, would remove many of our staff members and teachers from where the children are. And the reason why we, we locate the, some of the administrative functions to the, to the middle of the building is to allow for natural light and, and for safety reasons for egress for children in the event of an emergency.
So if you were to do some step, step backs or setbacks on the, the lighting issue, wouldn't it be as big? I was wondering, you, you have a lot of that are multi floors. Has safety been an issue?
So we, we don't have a tremendous, like, I couldn't quote you, quote you exactly how many multi-floor locations we have. It's like maybe a couple. And those locations were established at a time when, when safety wasn't at, you know, safety and specifically the concerns we have around the potential of an active shooter is as prevalent as it is today. So we, we've adopted our model based on best practices for our industry, which is, which is a one-story operation where possible.
So are there studies that show that it's less safe?
I can't, I can't quote them, but what I can, what I can say is that having egress from, from classrooms is a best practice, is a best practice for safety reasons.
From a licensing standpoint, the only kids here that can go upstairs would be preschoolers. The infants and toddlers need to be at the first floor. Otherwise, the center wouldn't be licensed.
So you have 60, 60 preschoolers, right?
Correct. But, but there's not.
But the other point, though, if there's not topographic change, if it's a 10-foot, let's say, topographic change, you would be at grade at both levels, right? So I'm not sure if the 10-foot or 12-foot topographic change.
It's only about four, yeah, four.
But that's what the section will show us, okay?
If I could also address some of the comments, too, regarding that, that grading and retaining walls. Those two walls are less than three feet along the back there. The, under the existing conditions, the site generally grades from Blue Hill.
The, under the existing conditions, the site generally grades from Blue Hill Avenue towards the west, towards the two abutters. Drainage, everything drains off-site towards the two abutters. It does flatten out towards the gravel area in the rear, but everything is pitching out away from the site towards the rear. In the post-condition, we're capturing roof area with the roof gutter system, we're capturing all the paved area, we're sending all that captured runoff into an infiltration system that's for storage for infiltration, it's got water quality improvements, water quality enhancements. So the only areas that are actually shedding off the site under a heavy rainstorm event are the small, you know, there are going to be lawn areas that you see in between the two walls and the rear corner of the site. So under the current condition, you've got a paved site, multiple buildings, a lot of gravel area that is just, you know, sheeting water off-site, whereas in the proposal, you're controlling the majority of the site.
Well, if you want to go to the photo that showed the property line, what the neighbors and the rest concerned with.
You want to go to the drainage plan?
The photograph of that property line that you had at the beginning.
Like the one behind you?
The photograph.
No, this one.
No, the actual photograph.
Just on the PowerPoint.
PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Sheet, number eight, I think. There you go.
There it is, Joe.
Okay, so the way I understand the grading plan is you're going to put a retaining wall right here, and you're going to have the earth higher by at least two feet, if not more, on this side of that retaining wall. And then the building's going to be very close to that. So I think, you know, the neighbors coming in here, they want to understand what they're going to see right here. And if you had a realistic kind of eye-level view that showed the building and the walls, that might be helpful, too. Because to the point of your variance, that's pretty close to the property line, so I think it's something that needs to be at least well-understood by people who'll be making their decisions.
Can we actually talk about that? What is the process? So you need to do a variance, if you don't get the variance for the location of the building, our decision here is sort of moot for the time being, right? So are you going to the ZBA and then coming back to us after their decision is made?
Yes, we're filing, we've filed concurrently.
Okay.
We're on before the ZBA on the 12th.
And then when are you back to us?
Potentially that night or two weeks later.
Okay, is there?
Yes. I have another question.
Sure.
Hi, so Roxanne Musto, I live at 101 Milton Street. I have a couple of quick questions. One was, I know that we were talking about parking on the site and so forth, so my question is, is if you have, I think you said sixty preschoolers, for instance, so if there's like a preschool graduation, and how would the cars be handled for that, with parents and grandparents and things coming for an event like that, where would you put the cars?
So oftentimes what we do in situations where there's school, potential school-wide events, is stagger the timing of graduation ceremonies to try and lessen the parking burden. But there are, there are, there will be a couple times during the year, admittedly, where, when there are larger school events, when there could be excess parking.
Where would you park them, is my question, because you have, what, thirty-three spots? You're going to have teachers there, you'll have a parent, you might have another parent, you might have a grandparent come, even if it's, say, a class of twenty, right? Even if you did each class individually, it sounds like you're not going to have enough parking, you're going to have to spill out onto the side street.
I agree.
Even if they're staggered, or, yeah.
I agree with you, and we're happy to look at alternatives and come back to you.
Okay, so that would be one question. And even if you have like an open house for the school, which a lot of times people do have open houses, and those can be quite a lot of cars. So I think for the neighbors, that's definitely a concern I hear. The other question I have is, with the different proposals that you have, the one that you're seeking versus the as-of-right, and actually what Tabor Healy was mentioning as well, is there a way to go to the site to sort of mark out, maybe with caution tape or something, to do a walkthrough with neighbors and members of the board so we can actually see what is being proposed? Because I feel like sometimes, you know, and I appreciate that we have pictures here, but I like to look at something face-on, so I like to say, okay, this is the proposal, this is the fire station, so what am I seeing from Blue Hill Ave? And what am I seeing from the neighbor's perspective? And I think it's hard when you see this, because you're just seeing what the final product's going to be, but you're seeing an aerial, but you're not really seeing it from the perspective of when you drive by, how it fits into the neighborhood, or from the neighbor's perspective. So my question is, could they do a walk, you know, a site walk, basically, where they outline what they're proposing today, what the as-is would be for the footprint, where it would be, and perhaps something like Tabor said, just so that we can see why they're thinking what they're thinking would be better, and try to understand that better? And, I mean, I think for all of you as well, I mean, I'm from the area, I've lived here my entire life, I'm very familiar with this location, but, you know, you may not be. And the other thing with the studies I wanted to ask with regards to the traffic studies and so forth, I know we can't dictate that, but with the ins and outs, each location is going to have different variables. So when you look at, you know, the traffic coming in and out of that site, you have to factor in what traffic is like at three o'clock on one thirty-eight, you know, what traffic is like at eight o'clock on one thirty-eight. It's going to be different than your Dedham Manor site, for instance, the traffic may be flowing differently there. So when you're talking about ins and outs, and, you know, five minutes for a drop-off, fifteen minutes in and out, I think you've got to look at that a little bit, you know? When you drop off a child, you're going to run into another parent, and you're going to talk for a few minutes. Your child might be one who doesn't want to get out of the car, and you're dragging them out of the car. So I think in an ideal society, in an ideal world, yeah, it's going to be like this. But I don't think that's realist, I don't think that's realistic. And I think you have to account for the location. So I would like to see a little bit more of looking at the location when you're looking at the ins and outs, and sitting at that site and actually seeing what's going on there right now, because even as people said with the one thirty-eight traffic study, that could be years away, and this is looking at being built now. So that's my question, so thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to ask for a site walk for myself, I don't know if anybody wants to join me, but I would, I would be interested mainly because of the gradation issues.
Okay.
Because I'm a visual person, I need to.
Okay.
But you don't have to go, Kathleen. It's on a call.
I am a visual person, so I'm like visual, you know, actually, I can read plans pretty well.
That's good, you have to.
Okay, anybody else in the audience have, or the thoughts?
I had some questions, but I want the public first.
Oh, all right, I think I saw that Jack Dolly left, and he was on our agenda.
Sometimes he camps across the hall.
Across the hall?
Yeah.
All right, I told him that when they asked to be on the agenda, that I would at least give him fifteen minutes, so Danny, if we can finish.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I was just wondering, are there heaters or AC or any food equipment, do you know where that would be on the building? Would be on the.
The area that's in the middle of the building has a flat roof, and so everything is concealed behind all of those roofs that you see on the building. I think there's a transformer shown on the site plan.
Correct.
And I, I know that Kathleen said we can't dictate how many students or anything, but just for the public's understanding and for our understanding, the town's understanding is they grant, not waivers, but variances. You had said you only expect eighty-five students, but these plans are for a hundred and twenty-six, and I was wondering if you were to cap it to a smaller number, you know, what your thinking on that would be?
I don't think we said we were expecting eighty-six, we're expecting more than that, but the max would be a hundred and twenty-four.
Well, they've said, they've said less before.
I think the Dedham site, we said we're experiencing eighty.
What Kevin said, no, it's for a hundred, no, it's.
It's licensed for a hundred thirty.
Hundred thirty, eighty-five.
Yeah, I was trying, the point I was trying to make is that we're running these numbers in a scenario where the school is fully enrolled, a hundred percent, in reality, that's, that's pretty rare in our experience. So like a full school is typically like ninety percent, just because you might have children who come for half-days, for example.
Oh, I see.
So you can never really fill the school, and on average, our schools are utilized at seventy-five percent, which would relate to a hundred students. So all the numbers in here are kind of worst-case scenarios, and, you know.
That really comes down to the half-day issue?
Yeah, half-day, and, you know, you're just not always full, you know, so it's, but so on average, we're at about seventy-five percent utilization, and we have to look at the numbers as, you know, in any capacity situation, but, you know, one, you know, I think that the point I'm trying to elicit is that in reality, will be, will be less, most likely.
Thank you. I think so, yeah.
All right, so I'd like to suggest that you schedule a site walk, and whoever can make it, can make it.
And the neighbors would be invited, it'd be public.
While we're.
Yes, could I just make a request? If you're going to do a site visit, it's probably easier for the neighbors if you did it on the weekend, because we're home on the weekends, and during the weekdays we're working.
Thank you, thanks.
I would suggest Saturday, Saturday the twenty-second.
Saturday the twenty-second?
Nine o'clock.
I can do that.
What time?
Nine o'clock.
I can do that.
I can't, but I don't.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'd like to suggest that we. My motion is to.
We continue the hearing?
Continue the hearing until twenty.
Until?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Seven, twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Yes, the twenty-seventh, sorry.
And we owe you cut sheets and some other, some sections, lighting, cut sheets.
Right.
That'd be it.
Okay, that's you.
We'll check in tomorrow.
Okay, and do we have a time still that we should continue this to seven fifteen?
On the twenty, oh.
On the twenty-seventh, if I can.
No, you have. What do we have? On the twenty-seventh, we just sent out a site plan, an amended special permit for Jack.
Okay, so you're going to follow that.
That's at seven fifteen, is he going to follow that?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
So there's been a motion to continue the hearing until.
Seven thirty on February twenty-seventh.
Yes.
All in favor?
Bye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you for all coming.
Cheryl, Jack did leave, I'll give his part right now, he sent a. Thought Tabor was talking. Danny, Danny, on the picture on the board where the hand is.
Yeah.
That's where those mechanicals will wind up.
There in the middle, that's cool.
Thank you very much.
And the roof.
Thank you.
You see the roof is high and drops down?
Oh.
No, Danny, see how the roof comes up and then it drops down? They're inside that area. You see all the points are blocking it.
Yeah. I worry about snow, when you have something that flat, because I was in fourth grade in the blizzard of seventy-eight, and my desk got crushed. By a flat roof, just.
I don't think we're having snow anymore, though.
Got a month off of school, it was great. Yeah, we don't have snow like that, only every four years we get.
All right, well, I'm sorry that Jack had to leave, but it was only intended to be a short kind of.
That was ten.
Discussion, and then more for him at our next meeting, is what I told him.
So, so he's, he's, he's asking for an amendment to the special permit?
Bill's going to give us an overview of what he's going to.
He's going to, he's going to change his architect.
Yeah.
The architect is, it doesn't change the open space, it doesn't change the utilities, doesn't change the road, all it does is change the architecture. It's not going to change any of the site plan grading, none of that changes, just the design of the buildings.
So given how much, this was something that Bill and Jack and I met about, just to kind of see what I thought if it would require some kind of amendment. There was a lot of discussion about the architecture during the special permit process, so I felt he needed to come back to us, and that's why he's going to come, but not in a formal application, he's going to see what we all think, because I gave him my opinion about it, but as a board, we can give his, give him a collective.
We have copies, I have electronic copy of their proposal, I will.
And what I saw is, if it's not, if it's similar to what I saw, it's not just changing firms, it's changing the architecture.
Yes.
Quite a bit.
Yes.
The design of the buildings quite a bit.
Yes.
So can I ask that someone consult with the historic commission before he comes back, so that we're teed up to have their input as well, because they were pretty heavily invested.
Yeah.
And so that they get a preview of what's being proposed and are prepared to respond.
Well, are we getting a preview?
No, that was what he was supposed to talk about tonight.
Is there a reason?
I guess I'm asking if they should get the same, at the same time we get it, just have them come to our meeting.
Well, you got a preview, you're our resident architect.
But did he give us a reason? I don't know if it's changed since then, no, that was quite a while ago. He, I, he has different reasons, I think, and I think he should explain them.
Okay, so that's fine, I guess what I'm trying to avoid is if this goes on for six more months. And if there's a way we can streamline it so that the people that have a vested interest are prepared to respond, that'd be great.
The historical commission should be invited to our next meeting where this is on the.
And there's materials.
They can send a letter, whatever.
Yeah, and if there's any materials that all of us can get in advance, I think that would be helpful.
I like the new design better than the first one, I thought it was, I think the new one is more ornate, I think it has more character.
All right, well, it's.
Well, I don't have a problem with de-emphasizing garage doors, because I think that's just silly, but, you know, they have an idea that makes that better, that's fine. We had, we just had a number of meetings where we discussed the architecture, and the historical commission, as you rightly said, was involved in those discussions, so I do feel like the public should have an opportunity to see what the new designs look like.
I'll send, when I send you the electronic file, I will send the same electronic file to the historic commission.
Great. Great, okay. So, so that's on the twenty-seventh. To the extent that there, anyone who wants to consider any further revisions to the zoning for Milton Village, the twenty-seventh should be our time to do it. I don't think we want to get too late into the process with respect to the warrant committee's request to ask us to do it.
So, I mean, the only open items, really, because you heard from the public, nothing to say, which is.
Right.
Is Alex's letter.
Right.
So maybe if people go through that and say, I want to talk about item one, two, and seven, we could, again, be aware of that, so that when we come to the next meeting, we can at least think about it.
Right, exactly. Everybody should hopefully, like, take a look and see what they think.
Rather than going through it line by line, because it's like twenty-five pages or something.
Right, that's a lot. It's many, it's many of the issues that he's raised before.
I think, I think so, that's what I was just peeking through.
Yeah. I read them. Kathleen, I think, is the only one of us who's really been able to read it, so I don't really have sense, but she does, and she says it's, said the same issues that he had raised before, and, you know, we've talked about this before, you know, parking, it's historic, you know, the issues about the affordability, you know, but I think, given the situation we have with four applications for forty Vs, I think anything that we can do with any kind of overlay district to encourage some more affordable housing is a good one. But he had said something about putting in all these definitions, and I think, I think their basic point on the affordable housing is that we just want to make sure it gets on the subsidized housing inventory, and I don't think we care how that happens. So I see that Julie Creamer's here from the Affordable Housing Trust, and. So did I. And Julie, if you don't mind coming up, I'd like to ask you if you're comfortable with the language for the great estate amendment, you know, so.
Yep.
And also with the language that was reduced amount now in our zoning related to the affordable housing.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, you know, I know that Alex has a few comments on, you know, not letting the.
You know, I know that Alex has a few comments on, you know, not letting the poor farm...
Developer, oh, the Pulte Farm be a defining moment for us.
And, you know, to me, those, they're very separate arguments. I think, you know, the Walcott Woods is, you know, are more two-bedroom, you know, two-and-a-half-bedroom homes, they're not big family homes on single-family lots. And so I think downsizing to a smaller size, it's, it's, it's in DHCD's, you know, design guidelines, so it's not like you're veering off from something that's already established and already something that's been, you know, part of, you know, their design standards moving forward. They, it used to be a little bit bigger, they've now, you know, made them a little smaller, and I think people are living in less, you know, it's...
What are you, in your professional world, what are you seeing for, let's say, now for two-bed, like, an average-sized two-bed unit?
We're seeing eight hundred, eight-hundred-and-fifty to nine-hundred square feet. I mean, the price...
It used to be one-beds, right?
Yeah, I mean, the price per square foot now in Boston is just, it's, it's, it's really difficult to, you know, have the rent, you know, match the cost to build. So you're building a little smaller, you're also getting, you know, a little more efficient in your design, you know? You're, you're losing the mechanical closets, you're now getting, you know, these things on the wall. I mean, it's just, you're learning to live in less because you can't afford to build large.
And even just the design of the units has changed so much where it's a lot more open.
Right.
You know, you don't have a separate dining room, a separate living room, so...
Right.
And on the one-beds, what are you finding for your average one-bed, then, would you say?
I mean, you know, we're not building for the masses, you know? When I work on five-fifty...
Wow, okay.
You know, a studio is, you know, four-fifty.
That used to be a studio, right?
I know, I know.
Okay.
They're, you know, it's, it's different. I mean, we also build with, with some out-of-unit storage. We try to do that. Because, you know, that's what clutters...
Right.
You know, a bedroom or clutters, you know, closets. So we try to do that, to help, you know, to just give, and we try to create nooks for someone to put, you know, a desk, we, you know, we, we really, really focus on efficiency in our units.
Okay. All right, so thank you for coming tonight and waiting this long.
One other thing, is I think he misses the point of the bonus. You know, he said, oh, if you have twelve units, you get, you know, one extra, you know, twelve percent of twelve rounding down, you know, that whole equation that he did. But I think he's forgetting that when you're adding a floor, you're adding units.
Right.
So you're starting with a new number, you're not using the same number, but that was my only other comment.
Julie, one, one mention, at the board meeting I was at yesterday for the Real Estate Bar Association, we got this legislative list of bills that are up at the House, Tom may know about it, that there's a proposal to allow cities and towns to adopt a two-percent tax, like community preservation, it's actually same kind of language as the CPA, but it's only for affordable housing.
Wow, I hadn't heard that yet.
Yeah, and so, because there's a proposal to also raid the deeds, raise deed stamps, and that's a harder thing, because it's a city and town, and so, you pay the deed stamps at town hall, and then your deal falls apart, and then figure out how to get the money back. I mean, it was really complicated to sort of figure out. So this other proposal that Bill, Senator Brownsberger has put forward, is one where cities and towns could adopt, if they wanted to, a two-percent tax addition for affordable housing only. So I just didn't know whether, you know, you guys had heard of it.
Had you?
Yes, I'm...
With the same exemptions that, that are in CPA, the first hundred thousand and all that sort of stuff.
There's a couple of different proposals, and one of them, at least, would, would apply to high, very high-end real estate, so two-percent tax on, on any sale over two million dollars.
Oh, yeah, that's the City of Boston one, I think.
Yeah, so it's unclear, some of them are home rule petitions, some of them are just regular bills in the legislature, it's unclear, and, and as you mentioned, there's a variety of approaches.
Yeah.
Some of the Western Mass legislators, obviously, where values are lower, feel like that would exclude them, because they don't have any or many, either many or, in some cases, any sales over two million. So there's a proposal, or there's ideas to float, that towns could adjust it to...
Whatever their...
Their median, or above their median sales price, or above, you know, so we're gonna have to wait and see what comes out of the legislature, if anything, on this. All of these are, have, have severe opposition from most of the real estate industry, or parts of the real estate industry. But, yeah, I think probably the best bet for this session is some sort of local option that gives some towns the flexibility, CPA-like.
Yeah, I mean, and would go to the Affordable Housing Trust in the legislation?
Yes, I noticed that. Right, and last night, the select board voted five-nothing to, five-zero to bring a warrant article on CPA to...
Which is great.
Really?
To town meeting.
Ah.
This town meeting?
Yes.
Wow.
This town.
Yeah, this town, wait, this town?
Yes, so that will be coming to town meeting in May. So a one-percent, the recommendation is a one-percent surcharge.
But as I said, yeah.
With exemptions for hundred, first hundred thousand...
Yeah.
In assessed value for everyone, and then complete exemptions for low-income homeowners and low and moderate-income senior homeowners. So, so the full range of exemptions that you can adopt...
Yeah.
To help mitigate any impact on lower-income homeowners.
Well, third time might be the charm.
Second time.
Second time.
Only done once.
It felt like three.
There's a good track record of towns in their second or third town adopting it, as you know.
That's right.
And there's a good track record of success of every town around us, so it's an easy story.
Yes, we are now surrounded.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I joined Allison and Melinda Richardson for a tour of Neighbor Works Development project called the Watson.
Yeah.
And they certainly utilize a lot of sources, and afterward, we were chatting with them, if we had CPA, that's what we could do to be more proactive. And we're now looking at these three new, this week, forty Bs, you know, where if we
had some funds, we could be, we could be doing more that the town has better control over. I just want people watching, maybe still at ten o'clock, you know, to kind of be able to hear that.
And down at Milton Village, you know, where there's historic there and open space, you know, I mean...
Yeah, there's any number of places.
Right.
As people have said, with CPA, especially with the portion going to the Affordable Housing Trust, it gets you a seat at the table, which, you know, there's been communities, Easton is the one I cite most often, that really have used the CPA money to negotiate with forty-B developers from a very proactive, instead of a reactive stance, and they reduced density and increased affordability with CPA dollars. That is, that is the dream of every neighbor, right?
Exactly.
Well, I don't know if it's a total dream, but, but it's, you know, it is a win for the town that needed more affordable units, but also was concerned about, some of the concerns we just heard, you know, density, traffic, you know, so, so there's, you know, you can get creative, and when you don't have those tools, you have to react instead of be proactive, so.
Thank you, thanks for your work in helping us on the zoning articles and with the off-site units on those developments, so thanks again, and thanks for coming.
Fortunately, you have Julie.
All right, so I can be really quick, because Kathleen's wrapped up.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you.
No, no, the plantings went in on, at Pulte.
Yes. I saw your picture.
Yep, and so I'll just go back in the spring, make sure that they are still alive, but they look good, and we had a warm fall and a warm winter, so I think we're in good shape. I think the deers have been, deer have been nibbling on them, so that's our own culprit. And I'll check on the invasives in the spring. Do we know if they pulled the invasives out? I mean, I'll check in the spring, but I don't know.
Well, thanks for doing this.
Not really. Are those pictures at Walcott Woods, or are those at Pulte?
Mary, come on up, Mary, we got a citizen call.
Mary, please, yeah, come on up.
We, Mary and I went...
You've been sitting here all night, too, we're gonna let you come up.
She's the best citizen, she gets a good citizen award for this one.
Because this is at Walcott.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
This is at Walcott, the pictures are at Walcott. I have other pictures from Pulte, but no problem, so I won't bother you. And there were four more pictures that Allison can send you in a separate email, but that's okay, that's okay. What it showed was that Mary and I thought there was a row of beech trees, huge beech trees, you can see like that.
Yeah.
There was another one on the side, and then you see a stump here, and then you see stones here, and we weren't expecting these, these, yeah, we weren't expecting huge specimen trees like this to be removed, so...
Isn't that the one down by the front to the right?
No, that's another one.
That one was coming down anyways, I mean, if, if you touched it, it was coming down.
Okay, so that's what I was wondering.
Two down there, that, there's one on either side of the path, that they were coming down, whether they took them down or you went and leaned on it.
Okay.
They were really diseased.
We came after the fact, what we saw looked healthy from what we could tell, but could we look at the inventory shots of that area, just to know? And could we request a site walk with the arborist for the neighbors like Mary and the others that have been calling me, because they were concerned, of course, they were concerned.
You're asking the wrong person, but I will ask Jack.
We'll be talking to Jack for the next one.
But that's not a healthy tree, this stump.
This stump that I took a picture of?
Yeah.
Well, that's after the grinder went over it, too.
No, but look at the backside.
Yeah, but that's where the grinder went. I know what you mean, but in person...
The center looks all chewed up.
That's the equipment went in there, so, no, but I mean, it might be, but if we...
Is the stuff that Jack sent for tonight, where are your tree branches?
Do you know where the new, the new driveway is, going to go?
Down here.
Yeah, right along there.
Right in the entrance.
Yeah, so it's roughly...
Was there an original inventory of the standing trees?
In here, in here came out for...
Is that, came out for the...
That's the subsurface, there's a, there's a detention basin, there's a big drain in here.
So it came out for the drain, okay.
When we did the site walk, now, it was a little while ago, my understanding was that that orange mesh that they had put up was supposed to indicate that anything beyond this point was to be preserved, but those that were marked with some kind of, like, tape.
Right, but, yeah, but remember the markings were confusing, too, because they said...
Some were red, and some were red and blue, and some were pink, and so there was no clarity as to which were the ones to be protected.
So, I wasn't here for this whole process, but they had inventories?
So what we did was we, because there were too many trees on fifty acres to, to do a thorough inventory of, we took pictures from Google Earth Maps to look at the, to look at the trees so we could assess, and that way, if trees were gone, we would say, oh, there's a big gap there, we could see. So, but I think, you know what, let's drive by tomorrow, or some kind of...
They had a tree preservation plan, though, and that tree preservation plan...
Should identify which ones came out.
Should identify, so pulled that up, and maybe, again, Bill, and you could email that.
I tried getting that through...
There it is, thank you, Bill.
I couldn't find it through the...
These are some of the pictures.
Because the arborist sent the letter to the town, as required in the special permit, saying that the tree protection had been carried out according to the tree preservation plan. So, so there is a tree preservation plan as part of the special permit.
Oh, I'll go through the records and find it and get it to all of you.
I know that the final special permit has everything in one document, so it's probably a pretty big document, but the, there's also, not just the plan, but there's a narrative about what's required for the tree preservation.
Do you want me to just send that? And, and like that orange fence, in some cases, is only three feet from the, the center of the tree, it's not out, eight feet that it should be.
The drip line.
Yeah, so even the trees that are still standing now are definitely closer, or the fence is very much closer to them, hardly respecting the drip lines.
All right, so... Yeah, if you could go back, Bill, to the first or second one.
Okay, I'm gonna send it, kid, let's do it.
So this is what, this is what Mary is talking about, see, see how the...
Isn't this the detention basin here?
Yeah, yeah, so the detention basin is there, drip line, so...
This is the silk fabric here. So that orange fence should be following right in here.
Yeah.
Which is where it is, because this is, this is the cut for the detention basin.
So the reason that the fence goes at the drip line is because that's where the root ball typically is in the ground, and if you're running equipment over that root ball, you're compacting the soil, which impacts the roots.
Right, and, and...
And the health of the tree.
And it's all disturbed, even though it's protected by this coil. The coil itself shows that there's been disturbance before that was laid down even.
Okay, so...
And so the whole root system along that detention basin is already compromised.
So maybe we should see whether, is it Steve, the project manager?
The Gallagher.
If Steve can arrange for the arborist to do a site walk, and whoever wants to go on the site walk, you know...
So we can invite the shade tree committee and the neighbors, and I'm happy to go.
And Allison or Bill can go and just report back to the rest of us? Sounds like a good plan. I mean, we certainly would prefer to catch things early rather than later.
Especially on this site.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and maybe, you know, there could be a periodic walk, you know, as they, as they move along the site, you know, like, they're gonna, they're not disturbing certain areas now, but as they move their phases, they're gonna be disturbing new areas, so when they get the new protections kind of underway, and the arborist is satisfied, then do the walk before they actually do the walk. But now, I mean, you can do one that, right?
Can you remind me, is there supposed to be dedicated open space in the end on this property?
Oh, yeah.
It was supposed to hold that, the CONCON?
No, the organization.
Conservation restriction.
What organization?
The homeowners association.
The homeowners.
I think there's a conservation restriction.
There is.
Probably going back to CONCON.
Okay, because it wouldn't, I mean, the CONCON be involved in sort of looking to make sure, I mean, they didn't have to get an order of conditions for anything, because there's no wetlands, right?
Yes, they did.
Yes, they did.
But along the stream.
There's definite one.
Not in the front.
The what, yeah, okay.
They claim that that review is already done, if you follow the page, the check.
Okay. Just, I mean, I wasn't on that, so I don't, I don't know.
Conservation commission review completed, and that's up in...
It was, the tree preservation aspect, it was, was a subject of a lot of discussion, so I think follow-up on it is probably going to be expected anyway, they know the concern.
Yeah, do we have a tree warden?
But that's not what the tree wardens...
That doesn't, he doesn't do that.
Doesn't do that.
Private property.
Yeah, and...
There's a intermittent stream that runs through here, which is why CONCON is here.
Unfortunately, we've had a couple of projects that we've heard after the fact from one that's called Beach Lane or something.
Beechwood.
Beechwood Lane, where the trees are no longer, the beaches are no longer there. I mean, there's trees that are supposed to be protected on several developments, that all of a sudden, the trees aren't there anymore, or they were so damaged that they don't survive, and it's all for lack of following the tree preservation plan, and it's been a subject of neighbors' extreme frustration coming to us.
Well, we have a case that we're handling now for the Mass Land Trust, where we have a conservation restriction, and the property owner, you know, sells the property, they put the CR on, the new owner blasted all out the backyard, built a court for their kid to play lacrosse, and, and they said, well, that's just too bad, you know, we'll put, we'll order him to put in new trees. Well, he took out old, old woods, old forests.
That's the point.
And putting in like eight ash trees that are, you know, a little bit taller than me is not really...
The emeralder's gonna get after them.
Yeah, I mean, it's ridiculous.
What is the, what are the repercussions for someone if they start...
The problem is, we put financial penalty, I think we put financial penalty in, right?
Yeah.
But it's still, it's not...
And trying to get them to oversee the trees, like, we have on, that's the other project we have, we're gonna follow up on, maybe at our next meeting, the Caneley, remember Caneley on Hillside?
Right.
Took out 50 trees on the town line, town property, but...
In the right of way.
Oh, excellent, yeah.
So, now, we've had a, we've had a three-year diminishing bond, and...
He hasn't gotten any money.
He hasn't gotten any back yet, because the trees haven't really taken off yet.
Well, I mean, as I said, the problem is that, you know, you, you take out old-growth trees, you know, and you, and you get ordered by the court, in this particular case, they ordered the court to say, oh, yeah, you just plant some new ones, but, you know, seriously, he goes to Home Depot, get, you know, a bunch of stuff, it's not exactly, you know, the beeches and the, and the, you know, the fine oaks and elm, you know, not elms, but oaks and maples that were on the property.
Exactly, so, so like, you, you just saw, I mean, these are incredible beech trees, and there was a nice row of them.
Right.
So, we're down to two, and I don't know if there was three or four?
We had thought there were five, because there's that other one that you said that's gonna be coming down anyway.
There's two in the front that had to come down.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they were, if you didn't take them down, they're gonna knock down one of the ones that was in good shape, would have hurt it more.
Well, well, it'd be nice if they were there. Because I was on that sidewalk, and I didn't notice any dead beech trees, and I'm pretty good about that, so, and Mary didn't either, Mary and I have been watching, and, but the other thing that Mary and I were like, we want to get in and make sure the other beech trees up higher are okay. They're, I mean, Kevin Walker's moving that...
Oh, yeah.
...house any time now, right? He's got the foundation built, and...
Oh, really? I haven't seen that.
Yeah, yeah, it's coming along.
Moving a building now is...
To pieces?
You want to do it in the wintertime when the ground is frozen.
It's not been so frozen this year.
We've been freezing for, we freeze for two or three days, and then it's mud.
Yeah.
It's a thaw, so...
What a winter.
Okay, so... Thank you, Mary, and I guess Allison or Danny will be in touch with you about the sidewalk thing, okay?
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, anything else, anyone? All right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Someone in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, I keep going to say that and ask that. All right.